Good evening. Welcome to the October 21st, 2024 regular City Council meeting. The clerk can call the roll.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Winker?
Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames? Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? Vice Mayor Lowing?
Here.
For the record, five present.
All right. Our first special order of the day is to review a list of applicants and select candidates to interview for the Parks and Recreation Commission vacancy. I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Mahalani Ayan, City Clerk. The special recruitment for the vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission closed on October 6th. The applications were made available to the council and to the public. All council members electronically submitted to the clerk's office their selection of candidates to interview. And tonight, we have a brief presentation to outline the vote results for the Parks and Recreation Commission interview selections. Based on direction earlier this year for our 2024 Boards and Commissions recruitment, council members were allowed a number of votes equal to the number of vacancies plus 50%, which for this selection was two votes. So for the Parks and Recreation Commission special recruitment, we had six applicants for one position. I'd like to apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce any of these names. Vadim Axelrod received two votes from councilmembers Koo and Tanaka. Christopher Allen Brosnan received one vote from councilmember Burt. Yu Deng received votes from councilmembers Burt, Lowing, Lithgow Hames, Stone, Tanaka, and Winker. James Fox received votes from councilmembers Koo, Stone, and Winker. Mark Skonin received votes from councilmember Lowing. Rebecca Schomeyer received votes from councilmember Lithgow Hame. The three candidates that will be moved forward to the interview round is Vadim Axelrod, Yu Deng, and James Fox. And that concludes my presentation. The selected candidates will be contacted by the clerk's office for interview times. Interviews are tentatively scheduled for October 28th.
All right, wonderful. Thank you to everyone for applying. Missed you. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. So I'd just like to raise for my colleagues consideration going forward that as I went through these candidates, I had a real tough time deciding which ones to interview because there were a slew of them that I don't know seemed very qualified and committed with kind of a variety of backgrounds that would be contributions to the commission. And they were candidates who only if we went through an interview process would I feel more confidence in who was the best selection even to be interviewed. And I see that the way it worked out here, we didn't have kind of any candidates that narrowly didn't get in. There were several that got one vote. Well, that's narrow if they got one more. So I guess I have two questions. My understanding is that we had this as a practice, but not a firm required policy of the formula on how many votes we get. So one question is, is there an interest in interviewing more than the three? Frankly, I'd be interested in all six, and that would be basically an hour. We have, when candidates come forward, if they don't even receive an interview and they're really good candidates, we may never hear from them again and lose their interest in serving the community. And then second, whether or not we choose to change that interview, how many we interview for this process or for this event. Do we want to reconsider this policy and give ourselves a little more flexibility? So I don't know if we have just any feedback, and if not, then I'll let it go.
Mayor, if I may, and just to add to Councilmember Burt's comments, it is at the discretion of the council. You may make a motion tonight if you wish to to either select to interview all or potentially add an additional vote. So just wanted to put that out there.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I had this exact same conversation with the city clerk offline because I thought this was an unusually strong list. And there's one other complication here or opportunity, which is, in this case, we're only looking at one commission to fill one vacancy. So it's short enough that, you know, we probably could stand to interview six of them because we sort of compromised in the past and not interviewed them all because we just were slammed. And hopefully, that will also be changed with the change we made to interview two times a year instead of one time a year. So I would be open to interviewing more and up to six.
Would you like to make a motion? Oh, and sorry, Councilmember Winker, then I'll come back to you.
Sorry. This is a conundrum because it was hard, and we had very good candidates for whom I could not cast an extra vote. My concern is that we started this when we had so many of the positions up at once, so multiple positions on multiple commissions, and so it wouldn't just be an hour, it would be multiple hours and more. And so I don't know that we want to have different rules for whether we happen to have one up one day or, you know, 12 up another day. I don't want people gaming the system that way either. So that piece would concern me if we made a wholesale change. There are also, I can say, while there were other good ones that I had trouble distinguishing between without seeing them, there were some that I did not have an interest in interviewing as strongly. So I don't know if there's some tween that we could do, but I'm concerned about going wholesale, all applicants every time.
Okay, go back to Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, so first I'll just respond that this is a new process. We historically had interviewed either all the candidates or we would sometimes have a discussion on how many to interview. We tried to get something that was more consistent. But the idea that there very well may be certain of us only interested in a subset, maybe it's a sizable subset, that's not necessarily something that would be decisive for me. I wouldn't expect that we'd all want to interview the same ones. It's just what we would think collectively would be in the interest. So I'll go ahead and put it out there as a motion to interview all six of the Parks and Rec candidates.
I'll second that.
Should I just speak to your second?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back.
Yeah, go ahead.
We used to decide on each time the applications came in for each of the Boards and Commissions, whether we're gonna interview all of them or pick, select a few. So with every time that somebody applies, just the act of submitting an application, it's really appreciated. And when there's not that many, and there are so many worthwhile candidates for this position, and I think that is prudent that we do meet them as well as hear from them directly. And that's another reason why I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Winker?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, you're proposing that just for this particular, Councilmember Burt, just for this particular?
That's the motion.
Okay, so not as a standing practice going forward. And so thank you, Councilmember Koo, for clarification that it's been, I think, decided ad hoc before or on a changing basis. I'll go ahead and support this motion tonight and out of a sense of collegiality. I would suggest that perhaps going forward, we hope that people have at least two when there's quite larger numbers. But I appreciate the desire here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lithgow Hames?
I'm inclined personally not to want to go in this direction, but out of a sense of collegiality, I will support it.
And I'll just quickly weigh in before the vote. I agree. I don't want to go back to the old practice, but but I agree with Councilmember Burt, a lot of good applicants here, and for a small applicant pool, I'm fine interviewing all, so I'll support the motion. With that, no more lights. Let's take the vote.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Now we'll move on to special order of the day, item two. Resolution and support of the Child Care Program, Build the Future, Santa Clara County. I've asked Councilmember Lithgow Hames to read the proclamation or the resolutions are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see so many people and hear from the community here in the chamber. I have to presume you're here for this resolution because so many of you are children and probably far less interested in our other agenda items. Resolution, in support of Build the Future, Santa Clara County. Whereas the Council for a Strong America issued a report in early 2023, which details that the shortage of infant toddler childcare costs the United States $122 billion in lost earnings. Yes, you should cry over that. Lost earnings, productivity, and revenue every year. And whereas this shortage translates to a $15 billion economic threat to California and a $3 billion threat to Santa Clara County. And whereas a family living in Palo Alto needs to pay an average of $38,400 per child per year for infant care, $30,600 per year for one preschooler's childcare, and $10,500 per year for one school-aged student's after-school childcare. And whereas the two most significant monthly expenses faced by working families are rent and childcare. And whereas the lack of an affordable childcare option leads to underemployment, greater housing instability, less consumer spending, depressed business productivity, and the near impossibility of seeking, securing, and maintaining employment. And whereas investing in affordable childcare provides vital infrastructure to working parents and supports early childhood development, allows families to remain in the Bay Area, creates a stronger economy, improves business productivity and consumer spending, decreases poverty, leads to safer communities, and provides additional revenue for cities. And whereas cities have a direct interest in building strong local economies, supporting and benefiting from local small businesses, attracting and retaining families and employers. And whereas one of the most impactful tools we can deploy to solve our greatest economic and societal challenges is investing in broadly accessible, high-quality childcare immediately. And whereas investments in the childcare sector should prioritize supporting our most underserved children and their families, as demonstrated locally with the city's childcare subsidy program. And whereas the city of Palo Alto has actively demonstrated the importance of early care and education since the 1970s by commissioning and working on goals linked to a series of childcare master plans. In addition to our support for ongoing work of the Palo Alto Early Care and Education Committee, PACI, the city's key arm to work on childcare issues. And whereas the city of Palo Alto has long recognized the importance of early learning and education as articulated in the Comprehensive Plan 2030 Policy Numbers T 2.5 and C 1.15. I'm almost done, little one. And whereas the city of Palo Alto understands that the ability to afford quality childcare is a crucial need for its workforce and has implemented a program which assists regular employees with childcare expenses. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Palo Alto continue to support efforts to provide access to high-quality childcare to all children and families in Palo Alto. And be it further resolved that the city of Palo Alto will continue to empower city departments to, as applicable, promote childcare businesses in the city and provide support for providers who desire to operate within the city. And resolve that the city of Palo Alto will continue to empower and promote the importance of childcare businesses through the work of the PACI, which advises the city on early childcare issues under the oversight of the Community Services Department and provides support for providers who desire to operate within this city. And resolve that the city of Palo Alto joins with Build the Future, Santa Clara County, through PACI in advocating for solutions to address our childcare crisis, including but not limited to working with a diverse array of partners for the purpose of addressing this economic and social crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have Jeriah, the Associate Director of Care Policy for Working Partnerships USA, to receive the resolution. Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gru Stone and honorable City Council members. Again, my name is Jeriah. I'm the Associate Director of Care Policy at Working Partnerships USA, but I'm the primary coordinator for the Build the Future campaign. And if you didn't know what Build the Future is, it's essentially a movement co-chaired by Supervisor Ellen Berg and also our Executive Director of Working Partnerships, Maria Noel Fernandez. And we are making a movement throughout the entirety of Santa Clara County to pass resolutions like this one to ensure that all families have access to affordable, high-quality childcare and making sure that our childcare providers are being given a livable wage. And Palo Alto is already at the forefront of this issue. When I pass this resolution in other cities, I point at Palo Alto and I say, try and do the work that Palo Alto is already doing. And so I'm thrilled to see how many members of the community came out today, and a lot of people wanted to speak and support. And so I just wanted to first mention that this resolution is supported by, of course, the Palo Alto Community Childcare, Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce, childcare providers from the Care Workers Council, and National Domestic Workers Union United, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Early Education Development Director, the Upwards Community Impact Manager, the Palo Alto Teachers Union President, and of course, so many more. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Lithgow Hames for your leadership and advocacy on this issue. And also, of course, to PACI for your continued support and to Minka for all your work in this space as well. And so I just wanted to say thank you. Please vote yes to continue to reaffirm your support for affordable childcare in the city.
Welcome. Great, thank you. And I'd like to invite yourself and the family members up to the dais so we can do a photo for anyone who is comfortable to do so. All right. And since this is a resolution, it will require a vote of the council so we can have a discussion, motions. Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out. I neglected, when I opened with the resolution, to acknowledge two women who are really key to this resolution being put forward in Palo Alto and to all of us being here tonight, and that's Minka Van Der Swogge from our city staff and Lee Fab, who runs Palo Alto Community Childcare. So I would love it, I know it's, yes, little claps are happening, and I think that's quite appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt?
And I would like to move that we, I'd like to move that we pass this resolution.
Okay, I would just like to add that it was really nice to hear the recognition of the great childcare programs that we have in Palo Alto and that we can't take for granted. We have some incredible nonprofits, and the, far and away, the most significant of them is Palo Alto Community Childcare, who was very represented here tonight. And they have had a decades-long community partnership with the city and the school district. And I just want to call it out because sometimes we start taking for granted that these deep community partners are just another nonprofit, and they really are our partners. And I know that in 2020 and 2021, PAC was holding on by their fingernails as a result of all the impacts of COVID and the financial impacts. And my understanding is that their backs stronger than ever. And that's really great to hear, and congratulations.
Councilmember Winker?
Yeah, I just want to add my thanks to Palo Alto Community Childcare and to the folks at Build the Future because this is just essential. You know, as was mentioned in the resolution, it's essential for our families, our children, for gender equity in the workplace, and not just for working women, but for working parents of all genders. And it's just absolutely an economic issue. It's an equity issue, and it's a community issue. So thank you for the work you do every day on this, and we're proud to partner with you.
I just want to weigh in with my own thanks to you all being here and all the work that you do. When I was at Duvenec, I was, as a student, I attended PAC and have so many incredible memories and really, I think, helped my own development and meet new friends and to be able to learn in that after-school program, which was incredible. So a lot of wonderful, fond memories. And also just appreciate the work and the focus too on childcare and the costs associated with it. As someone who's hoping to start my own family within the next year or so, the costs associated with it and trying to balance that with rent and affording to live in Palo Alto is daunting. And costs should not have to go into somebody's consideration when they're deciding to have a family. So I really appreciate the work that you're doing to address some of those harsh realities of living here in Silicon Valley. So glad we have this incredible partnership with all of you and hoping to continue to be able to grow it and to support more families here locally. So thank you, and I see no more lights, so let's take the vote.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody. Okay. So now we'll move on to agenda changes, additions, and deletions. Assistant City Manager?
Tonight, staff has no revisions.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to public comment. How many speakers do we have signed up, Madam Clerk?
We currently have two requests to speak on public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, great. Then we'll do three minutes each.
Our first speaker is Samantha R.
Hello, Councilmember. So nice to see you this evening. Samantha Roman, Vice Chair, Historic Resources Board. And I am here tonight in preparation for Chairperson Eagleson Cheselwitz's review of our 2324 work plan this evening. And in that work plan this year, we, the HRB, finalized a draft Mills Act pilot program as part of work plan goal number five. And as you know or may know, the Mills Act program is the single most compelling historic preservation initiative that the state of California provides to homeowners. And I am here tonight to follow up on the draft program forwarded to council by staff on September 12th and to request a joint council-HRB study session on historic preservation initiatives during the 2025 work plan year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ahmed M.
Hey, all. Nice to see so many of you, and it was absolutely wonderful to see so many of you at the Hate Crimes Event. Thank you, Mayor, for hosting that. But I did want to talk to you all. But I did want to talk to you all about that issue specifically because you all are our representatives, and our representatives should stand for justice, no matter what is the case. And an important element of that conversation that we had, and I'll say this by saying like I'm somebody who's committed to civil rights regardless of who it is for. I'm somebody who runs a clinic at Stanford Law School protecting survivors of sexual violence. And so our rights here, and I'm just talking about domestically, matter. And an important element of telling people that their rights matter is to see them, to visit them, to ensure that their humanity is seen through the lens of who they are. And while many of you had attended that location, I did ask a question, and I'm sure you recall, with regard to the fact that we mentioned at that forum that a big part of preventing hate crimes is ensuring that when they occur, that they are reported. And a big part of ensuring that they are reported is for people to trust the government to be able to report such hate crimes. Now, I'm sure it's unsurprising to you that when I tried to recruit to people from Muslim and Arab backgrounds to very distinct and different backgrounds, they sometimes can align, but many times they don't. There's many people who are Christian Arabs, and there are many people who are non-Arab Muslims. But when I consulted people of those backgrounds to attend, they said, what? For what? I don't trust the community. And that should indicate a grave and important factor with regard to the reporting element of hate crimes from my community. Now, with regard to that, communities of Muslim and Arab backgrounds having, have seen an increase in both the severity of hate crimes, like the kinds of hate crimes have, the severity has increased, and the number has increased. And just less than a month ago, a young Yemeni Muslim child, an Arab child, a Muslim child in Michigan, not here, but in Michigan, was stabbed, and that was the second time in the past year that someone who is six years-
Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you all so much. I encourage you to attend Muslim events. There's a Friday prayer at Unity at 1:30. You can attend that.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember.
Thank you. So two things I just wanted to note. One, I think several of you have perhaps attended the, either the opening night or one or more of the UNF documentary film festival showings, which are going on now through October 27th. And it continues to astound me when I talk with members of the community that they are shocked that we have such a prominent documentary film festival here for 27 years, and they've never heard of it. And they're very interested once they do. So anyway, I wanted to provide that opportunity to make sure everybody's aware that they have showings, I think, every, every day virtually through the 27th on all things related to the UN Declaration of Human Rights and, and some really phenomenal films. And then second, I wanted to give an update on the, the Bay Adapt Plan of Shoreline Rise that the Bay Conservation Development Commission, we just had a hearing on it that was actually a study session, and we're looking at the approval in December. And it's a pretty significant Bay Area plan and document, but I wanted to clarify a couple of things. That the, the role of BCDC is to adopt guidelines. It's not a set of explicit mandates. And then the Bay Adapt and Regional Plans or the Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan will be adopted on, or it's planned to be adopted on December 5th. The city of Palo Alto submitted a letter on it. One of the things that I've seen from other, either cities or subsets of cities that are collectively working on Bay Adapt Plans is trying to make sure that the reporting requirements are not so overwhelming that they create a real burden as opposed to focusing on the outcomes. And then, and, and to make sure that we have a, an area plan, set of guidelines that still give adequate local flexibility on how to implement them. And the permitting processes for projects on the bay will not be changed by that. BCDC still has an oversight on that, and these guidelines won't change the permitting processes. And so local cities will be adopting their plans under the R S A P or Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan. And then they will determine whether those plans need CEQA approval for them. And then once we have approved plans, that makes us eligible for additional funding. So our staff, I'm not sure when we're going to have a next update from city staff on our own shoreline plan, but I'd like to, maybe at the next meeting, we could get an update from the city manager on when that would be agendized. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. I just want to report out on my trip to the California Cal Cities Conference this last week. I attended a couple of sessions. One is on the California Economic Forecast, Navigating the Economic Trends. Basically, currently what is looking at expenses that are going high is really based on the politics. So a lot of watchers are keeping an eye on the presidential election. And what was interesting was that a lot of the prices, that a lot of the prices have gone up. And mostly, we're seeing good, they're seeing goods prices coming down, but service prices going up. So that's something to kind of look at and make sure that we keep an eye on. For, on the federal level, when they're also talking about raising tariffs, and that will dramatically cause price increases, disrupt supply chains, and will have economic ramifications. People still don't feel good about the economy because even though goods costs are coming down, it is still at the higher price. And the advice that's coming out from the economists is to be sure that cities has a rainy day fund because of disasters and so forth. They're looking at AI. It's going to be a huge disruption, especially also in the cognitive, it will be a cognitive disruptor also. Utility bills are up 7.9%, and a lot of it is going to be spent on cooling properties, homes, structures in the hot months. And that would mean that there'll be less revenues because people are paying for energy versus buying things. So also for people who have homes, mortgage rates are also going up. For people who have homes that are with a mortgage rate of 2% or 3%, they're advising that you keep it. The other one is navigating the fire insurance maze. A fire chief from Moreta was the one who gave the presentation. Apparently, the California Department of Insurance is producing a catastrophe mapping or model. But what they're not do, what they're not doing is including the fire department as well as people in the solutions. So this is an area that they're looking to get more firefighters involved in coming up with a solution. Thank you. That was mainly the two sessions that I was able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you. So I just also wanted to report out on potential, in regards to discussions with Tesla. So as you guys know, the Palo Alto Link Program loses quite a bit of money per ride. I think everyone in the community really loves it. But the big question that we've all been discussing is how do we fund it? And some of you might have seen the event last Thursday where Tesla announced the RoboTax event in LA. I was down there. I saw the technology, the cars, the self-driving. It's very impressive. They actually built a car just for this service. You know, relatively inexpensive, about $30,000. And, and the- So, and then, so Tesla has the technology, they have the hardware, but they're looking for test areas. And that's where Palo Alto comes in. So as you, as some of you might know, Palo Alto has Tesla's headquarters. Their engineering headquarters here, where they do a lot of the development, R and D for the, for the, the- The, in terms of, they need an area to kind of test this technology out. And so, Echikata, myself, our chief transportation official, made a discussion last week about this. Tesla provided the safety drivers. There wouldn't necessarily be a charge to any, any charge to the city. So this means that we could provide this service to, to, to the community at still, you know, really great prices. Terms still need to be determined, and, you know, because Tesla has a lot of cars, they could probably handle the peak load better than the current link service. The one issue, though, that, that has to be determined is Tesla doesn't, while they have the technology, they have the hardware. They don't have necessarily the license to pick people up. So, so the discussion about potentially going under the Palo Alto Link's license. But that's just a quick update, and happy to chat more with you guys if you're interested.
Thank you. Councilmember Vinker.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. This is a busy season in Palo Alto, so I'll try to quickly run through a couple of things. First, a, a big thank you to staff and community members and neighbors abroad and my colleagues who supported the Connection Weekend when we had Mayor Thompson and Rotarians and community leaders and faculty members from our sibling city Bloomington, Indiana, visit. Rotary hosted a wonderful housing panel Friday morning. City Manager Echikata and others met with the mayor and a staff member from Bloomington here at City Hall. And then Councilmember Bert joined us for that Public Safety Building Tour, and then he led a Cal Avenue Tour. So I thank you for that. And former Mayor Holman led a Palo Alto History Museum tour. So we had not one, but two hard hat tours for them, the Public Safety Building and the History Museum. And the Housing Authority also helped out and did a tour of the affordable housing projects happening in Palo Alto. I also want to thank Mayor Stone for coming to our town hall on Sunday and making a presentation to Mayor Thompson. And thank Councilmember Lithgow Hames for coming to that town hall and Director Jonathan Lake for showing up on a Sunday. We talked about housing. Turns out that Mayor Thompson was, spent 20 years leading Habitat for Humanity. This is a key issue for her, and so we had a robust discussion between residents in our sibling city and residents here about this challenging issue. So thanks to everyone who made that happen. It was really a tremendous time. Second, I just want to say briefly, I'll let, let others describe this, that I did attend the Hate Crimes Panel and was really pleased to see that happening in our community. So thanks to the HRC and to Mayor Stone for facilitating that. I quite enjoyed it, even though it's been a while since I've seen an all-male panel. I just have to mention that, to throw that in. But, so that was excellent. Third, picking up on Councilmember Koo's comments about the Cal Cities Conference in, it was in Long Beach last week. We were there Wednesday through Friday. I'll just report out on a couple items. Since I was the voting delegate, the sole issue that was brought to the Resolutions Committee and then to the full floor was an item that they, some people call the goose gander item, which was to ask the state legislature to adhere to Brown Act guidelines like we need to adhere to. Unfortunately, on Friday morning, there was not a quorum, and so they could not take a formal vote. There was a motion to discuss it, but there wasn't enough to do that. It will not die. It will go to the Board of Directors, but that's my formal report out on the item they considered. But I also want to mention that early 7:30 Friday morning, the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities had our regional breakfast, and it was great because we get together with council members and mayors from cities throughout the three counties on the peninsula, that being Santa Clara, San Mateo, and San Francisco counties. And we talked about the programs we've had this year, starting with the state, some, a state legislature summit in January, all the way to the Sea Level Rise event we had recently. Mayor Matt Mahan was there on our keynote and spoke about some of the efforts they're making in San Jose around homelessness and housing. And I will say that I was re-elected as the Legislative Action Committee Chair from Santa Clara County, and we all got sworn in that morning. So that was, that was a nice thing, and that's the key parts of Cal Cities that weren't mentioned previously. Finally, I can't not mention the Electric Home Tour that was this past weekend, and huge gratitude for the organizers of that and the residents who opened their home. There is nothing as contagious as the enthusiasm of somebody showing you what they did to electrify their home. Took my husband, you know, made sure he saw these things. And so I'm just grateful that we had that experience here in Palo Alto because it's not going to be, you know, just, just like cities don't build housing, cities don't electrify homes, residents do. So resident-to-resident communications are a great, great way to support that goal. Thank you.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend the Sibling Cities team for an extraordinary town hall on housing last weekend. You know, if you don't know, Sibling Cities exists to try to bridge differences. And so we are paired with Bloomington, Indiana, and there have been a series of town halls last year in this, focused on a different subject each time. And I'm struck by how we enter presuming we have such differences with this city across the country, and it turns out we have tremendous similarities. So on housing, you know, I think when their mayor, before their mayor spoke, Mayor Thompson, we were all polled on whether we thought there were significant differences or similarities. And the vast majority of people thought, you know, there's really little in common between Palo Alto and Bloomington when it comes to housing challenges. And I think it was clear, or it is clear to me at least, that the stereotypes we have about one another, which go both ways, can really lead to a presumption of a lack of commonality. But when we take seven, 10, 12 minutes to listen to a presentation from the other side, we suddenly have that light bulb go off and say, wow, they're dealing with the exact same thing over there. Maybe the numbers are a little different, maybe the metrics, you know, are a little different, but bottom line, they have a housing crisis. They don't have enough housing. The housing they do have is not affordable. And of course, we face the same thing here. So I just commend Councilmember Vinker and her colleagues, both here in Palo Alto and Bloomington, for putting on yet another fantastic community discussion and for really showing us that, you know, crises are in many places, and we can turn to one another for ideas and support, best practices. They actually put up a slide of a, kind of a coordinated area plan in Bloomington, and I found myself wanting a picture of that slide. It looked so great. You know, we'll put this here and this here and so on. And of course, we're doing the same thing when it comes to our downtown and San Antonio. So really kind of glad to be in it with Bloomington. Speaking of the downtown housing plan, there was a nice open house right here in City Hall about a week and a half ago where the community could just come out and look at presentations, depictions of, you know, the downtown and answer questions about what do you want to see where and what's important to you and so on. And I just want to encourage more residents to come out for these things. We are- And I just want to encourage more residents to come out for these things. We are a community that seeks and values residential, residence input constantly. And I don't want you to miss out on your opportunity to really share your thoughts about what the downtown or any other place we might be really working at leveling up. You know, share your thoughts. It really does matter. Really appreciated the Hate Crimes Conversation sponsored by the HRC. And what I lastly want to tee up is, there are three of us here on the Retail Committee, Councilmember Koo, Councilmember Burt and myself. And we had an excellent conversation last week about the imperative of holding a study session to really examine in a robust way the levers that the city and its partners in business need to push and the levers we need to pull in order to really stimulate our local retail economy. And so we don't yet have dates nailed down for this study session, but when we do, if this issue appeals to you, please participate in that. It's going to be, I think, a very exciting opportunity to continue to, you know, put gas in that engine, wrong metaphor, put wind in those sails, put sun on that solar panel to really continue to rev these engines of our economic development. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes, I just want to, it's been mentioned, but I just wanted to sort of underscore our thanks for the HRC. They've been the catalyst in all this work. And one example of that was that Hate Crimes Forum, which was very well attended, very high participation. All opinions were on the table and discussed. And something like this is, you know, every hour we can spend on this subject is, is very worthwhile. And it, it's our own HRC that was the stimulus for it. And of course, Mayor Stone did a great job of the moderating as well. So thank, thank you to you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Burt, now you had a quick thing.
Yeah, I realized I had neglected to mention two things. One was that we had on, on Saturday afternoon, a Kalinda Parade on California Avenue, which is a traditional Oaxacan parade, and it was a regional affair. We, we had hundreds of people there. Potentially, it's the first of a, a, a year of an ongoing festival that as we build on it could be a really major event. We had the Consul General of our region from San Jose there. And, and one thing that she has noted in the past is that in her district, which is Santa Clara County, Monterey, San Benito County, there are 200,000 Oaxacans. We are a Oaxacan region, and we happen to have our special relationship with the City of Oaxaca. And then I did want to mention one other thing related to Caltrain. At the last board meeting, we had a discussion and are basically in the midst of a modification to our quarter crossing strategy, which is the toolkit that Caltrain has adopted for the last couple of years to help cities deal with grade crossings. And we, at the Rail Committee, in our last two meetings, had been kind of coming to a, an interesting direction that hasn't yet had a chance to come to the council, which is looking at whether, given the reduced demand of not the number of trains that we were projecting before COVID, and that goes forward probably for coming decades, and the phenomenal increase in costs of grade separations, combined with a package of measures to increase basically capacity at the intersections through signal optimization, increase the security and safety, which is in the process of two major projects at Churchill to do that. And lastly, to deal with environmental impacts, which what really remains is the horn noise. And they either have quiet zones or what are called wayside horns, that that package can perhaps address three quarters of the reasons that we were planning to do grade separations at a location like Churchill, at a fraction of the time, a fraction of the cost, and a fraction of the impact. And there frankly aren't the dollars any longer to be able to do all the grade separations up and down the corridor that were considered. There never were. It was basically a $10 billion project that now looks like it's more like a $20 billion project. So the focus is continue full steam ahead on the highest priority grade crossings, which we've designated as Charleston Meadow. Other cities, Rangestorff have done so, and up and down the corridor. And the remainder to really look at these other measures as a package. And so at the next Local Policemaker Group that Vice Mayor is our representative on, this will be presented in this week. And so it's an interesting development that I think is very significant. And I look forward to being able to bring this concept back to the council shortly.
Okay, so let's move on then to our consent calendar. These are items three through 12. Do we have any public comment on the consent?
We have one request to speak. Our first speaker is Amy M.
Hello, I, I'm sorry, this is my first time doing this through Zoom. Can I just ask, I thought that I could possibly ask for five minutes. I've timed it. I can get most of it in in three. But I just wondered if I, I just had some additional things for, that would take four and a half minutes.
Sorry, the time is three minutes.
Okay.
You can always send in your comments on email.
Oh, okay. Can I just restart the three minutes?
Yeah, we'll restart it to three.
I'm sorry about that. Okay, I decided to ask. I'm just first time. To fit the time allotted, I have to make the statement quickly. So I will say thank you for listening in advance. Please do not extend the contract with Team Sheeper for the management of Rinconada Pool until management has addressed the needs of Palo Alto residents. I know the city council packet on this topic shows an overall glowing view. But of the 36 people who responded to the survey, how many are Palo Alto residents? When we see increased usage, usage numbers, are they actually increases in usage by Palo Alto residents? With all the fancy statistics in the packet, we don't know if and how Palo Alto residents are using the pool. Palo Alto has one public lap pool, just one. So as much as we might want to share it with the surrounding communities or be associated with a prestigious competitive swim team, or even make a profit, all of these should come distant seconds to the needs of residents. Pasa, Masters, Friends of Rinconada, none of the groups using Rinconada identify members as residents. And based on my observations, paying single use entry fees, the staff does not check residency. To extrapolate, we have no way of knowing if the resident fees collected actually come from residents. Who knows how many residents are actually using the pool? Any group managing our one and only lap pool should be tracking this information. For me, evening swim times are an essential part of enjoying the pool. It is actually ludicrous that our pool closes or severely restricts non-Pasa access after 4:00 PM, especially during the summer months. Who thought that was okay? Please recognize the red flag in that all the other Pasa locations are exclusive country clubs, except Menlo Park's Burgess. And even Menlo Park has other pools, so non-Pasa swimmers have multiple options in the evenings. There are several issues with the current pricing structure. The primary issue is that the current management has no incentive to keep costs down. Fees have climbed steeply at local pools when Team Sheeper starts managing them. During the pandemic, and contrary to statements in the City Council Packet, Mountain View Municipal Pool was open and charging $7 to non-residents, while Rinconada was charging $10 across the board. As someone that would use Rinconada one to two times per week prior to Team Sheeper, the punch card was the perfect compromise between membership and single entry fees. Right now, when I do want to swim, the $9 is a challenge, and sometimes I cannot afford it. Please reconsider the management of our single public pool. Having estranged former users like me, the current management caters to high-paying groups that may have little to do with residents. It is a good business plan, I admit, but bad for Palo Alto. That is all I could fit in three minutes. I only realized it would be a topic for the council this weekend. And though I just had a day to repair the statement, I think you can tell that it comes from many years of frustration with the current management of Rinconada. I had to read my statement quickly.
The time is up.
Present. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on consent calendar items three through 12.
Thank you. We'll return to the dais then. Any no votes or requests to pull? Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
I'll request to pull six based on the public comment just received.
Councilmember Tanaka?
I'll support that. And I'm voting no on four, five, seven, and 10.
Do we have a motion to move the consent calendar?
So will.
I'll second, correct. Councilmember Burt seconded. On the clerks ready, you can take the vote.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka, would you like to speak to your no votes?
Sure. So four is about reappropriations. Now, I know all of this is kind of routine, but, you know, we lost money last year as a city. We lost money this year and next three years, so not good. So I think what we should do rather than just blinkily re approving all the reappropriations is have stronger justifications for carrying certain funds forward. Prioritize only legally required or revenue-backed projects, and then setting higher bars for discretionary projects. And I think if we do that, then we can make, make some progress in terms of not losing money every year. Okay. And then five, five is something that I've been pretty consistent on. It's a fiber to the premise. And like I said many times, I think it's just simply too late. Have we done it five, 10, 15 years ago? No problem. But today, with, with Starlink and Fixed Cellular, it doesn't make sense. On seven, heat pump water heaters, why actually liked I do, and I actually spent a lot of time and money trying to get one myself. You know, really, it's an expensive program for the rich. Only homeowners benefit. Renters, which make up the majority of our, of our city, do not benefit. And, you know, I think we'll get a much better return on investment in terms of reducing our carbon output if we spend on transportation projects, like for instance, better bike lanes. And so to me, it's just hard to justify putting even more money, $410,000 into this program. And then the other problem with this staff report is that it, the numbers don't add up. So it's asking for $410,000. And when I do the math, so the assessments, you know, I could go over the math, but it's probably too much time. It only adds up to $232,000. And so it makes me wonder what's, where does the other $200,000 go? So that's another reason I can't approve this, because the math doesn't add up. So it only counts for about half the $410,000 that it's asking for. And then, and then number 10, you know, even more money for the Public Safety Building. I guess so. It's like another million dollars or whatever, but it's, it's a lot of money. And I think, I think we've spent enough on it. We need to, we need to kind of hold the line. And if we want, want to do more, we've got to cut something else. So I, I think keep pouring money into this project doesn't make sense.
Okay, Councilmember Lithgow Hames? Oh, you did? Okay, perfect.
Mayor Stone, I'd like to ask if I might be able to change, amend my vote.
Okay, I guess that's fine.
I'd like to register a no vote on 12. And since I vote, and all the arrests are fine. Apologies.
Would you like to speak to it, or was that sufficient?
That's sufficient. Thank you.
Great. And then Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
I'd like to do the same and register a no vote on six, please.
Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I want to thank the member of the public, Amy M., who brought to our attention a concern that perhaps the Rinconada Pool situation is benefiting the public, but not necessarily Palo Alto residents in appropriate proportion to the broader public. And so my concern here is that we're entering into a five-year contract without having the data we need as to whether this is actually serving the, the people we hope to serve with, with our one public city pool. So I would request that in the future, we bring data on who is actually served by, at, at the pool. And I also suggest to the member of the public, if she's listening, that it might be appropriate for you to offer this same public comment in front of our Parks and Recreation Commission. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Kylie Nozay, Assistant City Manager, here on behalf of City Manager Echikata. Next slide, please. So we just wanted, we'll have an abbreviated version of comments for the council this evening. Just wanted to note a couple of community engagement updates. So tonight's it. The Palo Alto Community Survey closes tonight. We did a few week extension for the survey. So just want to put out that last call to everybody. For those who've taken it, thank you so much for your participation. For those that have not, there's still time. Please go online and you can submit your survey by the end of this evening. We've also got a new survey online for the University Avenue Streetscape Project. So this is about the redesign and relook at University Avenue Streetscape. So you can find both of these engagement opportunities online at thecityofpaloalto.org/engage. And you can find not only these two surveys, but also other engagement opportunities in the community. Next slide, please. As one of the council members mentioned in Councilmember comments, and as you heard from their many points and report outs, it is celebration time. We're in full swing of the holidays, a full swing of all kinds of events. So a couple of things coming up, we just wanted to highlight. The Veterans Day Celebration is coming up on Monday, November 11th at 3:00 PM at MacArthur Park. And so this will be to recognize the service and contributions of the veterans of our U.S. Armed Forces, and is in partnership with a few different organizations throughout the, the area. So you can find more information at cityofpaloalto.org/veteransday. It's usually a really great event. So we hope that we see you in the community out there. The other one we wanted to highlight this week is that the 10-year anniversary for Mitchell Park Library and Community Center is coming up. So on Saturday, November 16th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we'll have a small celebration for that 10-year anniversary of speeches, architectural tours, performances, and some other activities. So really want to encourage folks to come out to that as we celebrate the 10-year mark, because we have new investments have come on board and newer ones coming on board shortly. So beyond these two, you can find the full city calendar for both these events, as well as many others, on cityofpaloalto.org/calender. You'll find lots of holiday celebrations as well as these. Next slide, please. As we approach the end of the calendar year, we've got a couple with many full council member, or council agendas. So next week, we will have the Parks and Recreation Commission interviews that you just voted on earlier this evening, as well as a study session on nonprofit relationships that really spurred from an audit from Baker Tilly a few years ago. November 4th, we will have the Council Technology Reimbursement. This is a referral that was given to Council Policy and Services Committee, and they have recommendations for the full council's consideration. In recognition of the Veterans Day holiday, there will be no council meeting on the 11th, but we've rescheduled it to November 12th. So there is a special meeting where we'll be talking about SCAP and this progress of that, as well as zoning changes. And last for the month of November is the 18th, where we'll have the study session with our IPA, Independent Police Auditor, as well as some fee fee and ordinance adjustments. As a reminder, we don't have a council meeting the week of October 25th, and the one that will happen is following on December 2nd. You can find more information at the City Council Agenda webpage. And with that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. The rest of the council is fine with it. I mean, we're only about an hour in. Maybe do the first action item and then take a break after that. Okay? You were no objection. Then let's do that. I see we do have our HRC Chair as well as staff liaison. So we'll call the Human Relations Commission up. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, council members. Minka Van Der Swogge, Human Services Manager and the lucky staff liaison to the Human Relations Commission. I am joined tonight by Chair Adriana Everly, and she will be going over our presentation and then happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me here. Okay, I'm going to go over our work plan finally. Thank you for having us. First of all, I wanted to go over our key accomplishments. We had a two-part series to understand the needs of the fastest-growing section of our community, the older adults. Then we had another listening session, Voices of Our Community. We had the local Muslim and Arab experiences in the Face of Rising Islamophobia and anti-Arab hate evening, and local Jewish experiences at the Face of Rising Anti-Semitism. We also had, did a survey on the lived experience of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islanders, and we reported it to council. We actually also reported the results of our community listening sessions on the local Muslim and Arab experiences and the local Jewish experiences. And we also had a faith community listening session and heard from our faith leaders. So those were our main accomplishments. Of course, we also did all of our funding recommendations for His Wrap, CDBG, and the Emergent Needs Funds. Next slide. So our work plan highlights for the next year are to continue the funding recommendations that we always do. So again, we'll do CDBG, His Wrap, and Emerging Needs Funds as needed. We'll continue our work on inclusion and belonging. Our, we, sorry, because it took us so long to present our work plan, we have done some of the things that we were going to do. So part of our work plan was to conduct a listening session with local faith leaders to better understand their needs in the communities they serve. We have done that. And now we are also planning on having, putting together some kind of summit to showcase all of the city's agencies and connect them with the faith leaders. Because what we heard from them is that when they were doing a renovation or trying to get permits, they were not sure where to go within the city. And they found that there were a lot of obstacles, which I believe a lot of the residents agree with. So we thought that by creating some kind of summit between the city and the faith leaders, we can help facilitate those things. We're also going to revisit issues and recommendations from our senior learning sessions and identify next steps. And we're also hoping to continue the work done to create connections and learn about the lived experiences of community members such as the AANHPI, MENA, and Jewish communities. We're also hoping to do our, what we've talked about, a Palo Alto Way Campaign, and facilitate having one day, hopefully, late summer, early fall, where we get residents to apply for the neighborhood grants and have neighborhood parties all on the same day. And we're hoping to get people out into the streets and getting to know their neighbors, and basically go back to the way that people feel Palo Alto used to be prior to the pandemic and not as, you know, mending some of the fractures that we have today. Goal number three, public safety, decreasing instances of hate crime. We, as council already mentioned, we had a community meeting that was part of our work plan for this year, and we already acted on it. So to have a community meeting to discuss hate crimes with representatives of law enforcement, city leadership, thank you, Mayor Stone, for being on the panel and facilitating it, and experts in the field. As I mentioned, it took place last week. Many of you were in attendance. Vice Chair Michelle Kraus and former HRC member Darryl Savage were the organizers, along with Minka and Elena. And I believe I agree that it was very well attended, and there were lots of questions. And I think we would have stayed there for another two hours if we allowed, if we had the time, because there's definitely an interest in this topic and a need to explore it. So hopefully, the residents also thought it was worthwhile. Public health, we are also focusing on mental health. So we would like to assess the community polls on health and safety. And one of our HRC members has joined the city's teen mental health task force. That was one of our goals. That's already happened as well. Our next goal is housing economic justice and development, equity and access to basic services in the community. We would like to continue participating on the local RV dwellers' concerns committee. And we are also exploring solutions for the numerous housing issues in the city with an eye towards equity. We're also planning on having exploratory sessions. We're trying to understand how, if there's anything that we can do to help make the city more affordable, where all sorts of people can move here and stay here and not have to move. Our next goal is climate change. We are exploring the way climate change may disproportionately affect vulnerable populations. And one of the steps that we're doing towards that, and we're hoping to be, to have one of our representatives with the newly formed Youth Advisory Board on Climate Change, which I don't know if they've already started their work, Minka?
I don't. I don't believe so.
Thank you. But we're ready to help them and participate in any way as soon as they start. So these are our highlights and our accomplishments from last year. And I'm ready for any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful presentation and impressive work plan that the HRC is working on and has plans to accomplish. Let's turn it over to public comment first, then we'll return to the dais.
No hands are raised, and there are no requests to speak.
Thank you. Then we'll return to council for questions, comments. Councilman Lithgow Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chair Everly, for your leadership and your presentation tonight. And thank you as well, Ms. Van Der Swogge. My question is about the public safety goal. Beautiful event last week, great turnout. And the big takeaway for me was that, hey, much of what we may personally experience as an unkind, uncomfortable, painful circumstance does not rise to the level of hate crime. They, the presentation made it really clear there has to be an underlying crime where hate is also involved. But if there isn't an underlying crime, it's not a hate crime. And I think it's important as a community that we know that, that law enforcement is in fact not the primary path for us to seek when we're hurt deeply. The bigger challenge, the harder piece of this is, we've got to figure out how to come together as a community and convene conversations and events and so on, that really do the hard work of helping us communicate more effectively, helping us not trample on each other's identities and feelings and perspectives. So I'm almost going to ask you, like, how do you solve world peace, Chair Everly? But what are, coming out of that, the community wants to call things hate crimes and therefore get a resolution. It feels neat and clean. It turns out, it's not that simple. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are and what the HRC will take up as sort of part B, or as a continuation of this conversation, and really trying to convene the community in ways that bring us together.
Thank you for that question. That is something that we've been wrestling with this whole time. I thought it was important that, one of the takeaways from the meeting last week was that there's a difference between a hate crime and a hate incident, but that the police does still want to know about hate incidents. And I think part of being a victim of a hate incident is to want to feel heard. And the fact that the police is open to, you know, writing, you know, taking it down and basically listening to what's happening in the community, I think that that's important. I also think this is where there's the overlap with the inclusion and belonging goal. So we've had, you know, several recommendations that we made to council a few weeks ago. And I know that I'm starting to work with, well, hopefully with the city, that's part of our recommendation, to work on anti-Semitic, anti-Arab, and, sorry, Islamophobic hate, work with the city to do training on those topics for boards, commissions, and city staff. And I, so we're hoping to keep the dialogue alive in a, you know, how can I put this, non-offensive, respectful way, which has been very difficult. I mean, it's been a really hard year for HRC. These are discussions that were hard to have, and we are doing our best and trying to foster an environment where everybody feels heard. I can tell you that as chair, I'm meeting with those communities almost on a weekly basis, and addressing concerns, and trying to move forward, and also, you know, doing what we can. Again, like you said, I don't think I'm going to be able to solve, I'm going to bring on world peace, but trying to at least have everybody be respectful.
I commend you for that. And it is a microcosm of what's happening in our nation, and of course globally. And nobody expects you to be able to solve it, or the HRC to be able to solve it. We trust you to be a community committee, commission, that can help us make our way forward. I do want to make you aware, in case you're not already, and forgive me if you are. Some years ago, the HRC put on Listening Circles, 100 Circles, or something like this. Chair Stringer, Valerie Stringer, was in the wake of the murder of George Floyd, and a conversation on race, which is not to equate that era with this, but simply to offer that maybe there's an opportunity in that, something that's similar enough such that we might see it as a model for getting back out into the community and having those really small conversations among the willing. I think that's key. It's among the willing. Not to suggest we try to impose a set of conversations on folks determined to be opposed to one another. But it's clear that there are some people in the middle somehow yearning for greater, less discord and greater harmony. And I think they trust that the HRC is a place where they can be heard.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I know we've talked about facilitating conversations. So we'll definitely follow up on that.
Councilmember?
Thank you. So first, following up on the goal number three, the public safety and the excellent event that you had a week ago. We had, really, on that aspect, we had two great presentations by our police department and by our county district attorney. And when, as my colleague mentioned, and you did as well, that this distinction between hate incidents and hate crimes, but that our police are actually encouraging the reporting of hate incidents. And one thing that they didn't speak to, that I really wanted to follow up with them on, is that there's a second value in addition to, you know, validating that experience. And that is that there are times where a hate incident can be a precursor to a future hate crime. And having that on the record, I think is a value as well. Or to even reach out where someone is bordering on going over the line and potentially having the police being able to have a preventative engagement there. The second thing I want to talk about, or just mention, is on your goal number one, on the funding for the various nonprofits and emerging needs. Are you aware that next council meeting, we have a policy discussion on this? Okay, I see nodding heads, yes. And so I guess I don't, is the thought that that discussion will help inform your subsequent review under goal one?
I mean, well, we, I know that there is a discussion. I just was made aware of it today. I haven't looked at it. And I don't know if there's a packet out already. There is.
Yes.
I haven't had a chance to look at it. But these funding recommendations, I mean, funding recommendations are something that, as you're aware, we do periodically. But yes, I think it would be helpful.
Okay. So I hadn't appreciated that that wasn't kind of strategically being looked at together. I think it's very appropriate that we do, and we can really help inform each other through that process. And then I wanted to also mention, under your climate change, and looking at vulnerable communities, in Palo Alto, it's not likely that we're going to see those communities geographically based. We don't have, like East Palo Alto, communities that are most adjacent to the low-lying bay that is, are more affected. In fact, our other great thread is our foothills, which is a relatively affluent community. But within Palo Alto, we have social and economic breakdowns, and particularly our lower-income communities. And this goes into, I want to make sure your committee is aware of the programs that are being evaluated as part of our climate action plan, specifically to address multifamily home, and including affordable housing projects and their electrification, and the heat pumps that go into the HVAC systems, which are in greater need as not only the climate warms, but what is causing people to seek air conditioning is that when we have mega fires, they're at the same time that we have peak heat weather typically, and smoke where people have to close their windows. And so there's an increasing interest in clean filtered air and cool air in those times. So that's a real intersect between your goal there. And then lastly, I didn't see anything about the role of the HRC in beginning to review the value and recommendations resulting from our first data from the rental registry. Is that on your radar? And I'm not sure when we will get first data, but I don't see it within the goals. And yeah.
Yeah, I would think that since the HRC work plan was established last March for our cycle, I don't think that the registry was far enough that they were thinking of coming to the HRC with data. The planning department has been really excellent on every step of the way with many of the rental protections, including the rental registry of coming to seek the opinion of the HRC, or having the HRC have joint meetings with the Planning and Transportation Commission. So they have been involved in many of these items, but specifically if they are coming to the HRC with the results, I'm not sure that specific conversation has taken place.
I will say that we've had this registry anticipated. We've had a timeline in which it would begin to provide information. I'm not sure what that is, but I'm pretty confident that we're supposed to begin to get information during this work plan period. And as a result, that would be a really important role of HRC as a specific as a specific goal for the year, which is to begin to review and make any preliminary recommendations or areas to explore as a result of that. That's why we're doing that registry and we don't want to wait a year after we have data before we have your commission's review of it and and your recommendations. So thank you.
I was going to say we have worked with them throughout this process. So as soon as there is data, I'm sure we can take upon ourselves or the council can refer something to us, but that's something that we do expect to be working on.
Well, then I'd put it as an additional goal because unless I'm mistaken on the timeline, it, we're supposed to get first data within this fiscal year. Now, maybe it's not going to come until FY 25, 26, but if it is going to come in this fiscal year, then I think it should be one of the stated goals.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that to your other point about the police, that they did say that they wanted to keep track of the incidents in case the incident eventually rises to a hate crime and they might be used, be able to use that evidence from before to show intent. So they did mention that during the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Vinker?
Thank you, Mayor Stone, and thank you Chair Everly for your report and more important, the work of the commission year round. So much appreciated. I just wanted to comment on goal six, the climate change goal. I had many of the same comments that council member Bert just described, but I wanted to just go just a little past that. You know, I, I'm just delighted to hear about the interest in environmental justice. I think that's just tremendously important issue for all of us as we go forward. And it's something that we think hard about on the Climate Action Ad-Hoc Committee. So affordability was mentioned, but also multifamily installations for water heaters, you know, heat pump, water heaters, heat pump furnaces, electric vehicles. We're trying to sort all that out without too much of the capital cost being passed on and creating affordability issues. So that's something we take very seriously. As do our partners. It may just be of interest to you. Last year at the Air District, I sat on the CEHJ Committee, Community Equity, Health and Justice, and there was a Citizens Advisory Council and it was exclusively focused on these issues. And so some of what they did might be instructive on this goal if there's ever an interest in talking to some of those folks. And I'm glad to see the reference and the interest in working with YCAB, our Youth Climate Advisory Board here at the city, our new, new YCAB, and PASC, our Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. And that's great, but I also invite you to work with us and to keep informed if it makes sense from time to time, the Climate Ad-Hoc Committee, so that we can be coordinated on things because that's, we are looking at these issues and it makes sense to coordinate there. And on that, I just wanted to ask you a little bit more about what you had in mind. It talks about a listening session and what role we can be of help and support on this goal.
Well, we, one of the things that we were thinking about is finding out the city's response to shelter needs for the unhoused during extreme weather events, because again, as we are the Human Relations Commission, there was some pushback about opening up last year from residents about opening up libraries, that was the library for the unhoused during inclement weather. So we, I know we're supposed to have, it might be even Minka come back to our meeting and tell us about what the city is doing for the unhoused during those incidents and we want to invite the residents of Palo Alto to come make public comment on it because there was pushback from the neighborhoods. So that is one thing that we're looking at. So the R, I understand city councils comments about electrification and heat pumps, and that's something that we can also discuss. But we were mainly looking at it through the eyes of the unhoused and how are we going to serve this community during these times of inclement weather? And help people who have been coming to us and saying that they cannot afford their utility bills because they're so high and they keep on coming high. So we're also planning on having somebody from utilities come talk to us. We're trying to understand you know, where the problem is so we can then come up with ideas of how to solve it.
Yeah, that's great. And I think of these as extreme weather shelters. They started off as clean air shelters, right, with the wildfires and all of that. And again, the Air District spends a lot of time on that and getting money. And there's a lot of grant support available for Clean Air Centers. Congresswoman Schu has worked a lot on that for exactly the reasons you mentioned, the unhoused, but also as council member Bert mentioned, people who don't have other ways to filter their air over longer periods of time. And then that sort of morphed out to, well, with our extreme weather, it gets too cold or too hot. You know, we've had the extremes of all of that, flooding, all of those. So that that sheltering idea is for all that extreme weather. And we've talked about that at various council committees. And so I think it would be absolutely terrific for you to elicit more information on that. And then as we develop policies and programs to see how they're actually working in reality, because these are not going to become less common. And so we're going to have to figure out a way to have a regular response because part of it is communication in times of extreme events. It's sometimes the most difficult time to get the word out. So even if we find solutions, making sure our unhoused community is aware of them is going to be important as well. So thank you very much for that.
I want to ask, when you're talking about vulnerable populations, can you tell me a little bit who that group that you're looking at?
Vulnerable populations as far as the climate change? So we're talking about unhoused and people who cannot afford, like I said, just lower in the socioeconomic.
Right. And when you spoke about some of the residents having issue about the libraries being used as a shelter during those weathers, is it a specific library that they're objecting to or is it all the libraries?
I thought it was a Rinconada library or the
Yeah, my understanding it was some residents who had a concern about the use of the downtown libraries overnight warming locations. So that's information that staff will bring to the Human Relations Commission. But as you know, all of our libraries are used to help people cool down or warm up during their regular business hours.
This is in particular just to spending the night, right? Or?
Well, it was my intention to give a presentation just as a key program that the, the city and the Office of Human Services is doing during the cold weather season. So the intention is very much to give information to, to them on this program that will be happening in the, the cold weather season again this year.
Very good. Thank you. I just wanted to understand that we do have other options with the other libraries. It's not all of the libraries that are being objected to.
That is my understanding from the concerns by some residents last year.
But that's why we want to have the presentation and welcome public comment so we can fully understand and we're basically investigating to see what the problem is. If there is really a problem, we want to hear from people. So that's one of the things that we're planning on doing this year.
Thank you. When we're talking about vulnerable also, even on the other topics here, do you reach out to organizations like La Comida, Ability Path, Avenidas to include the seniors as well into these conversations?
Yeah, I mean, we're in constant conversation. Minka is in constant conversation and giving them information every time we have a meeting that it's almost all the meetings that we believe it might be a topic that they're interested in. They do get information and invites to come in.
Very good. Thank you. And also I want to thank the commission for all the work that they're doing, including you, Minka. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I also want to thank you guys for your work. Really wonderful, amazing. Really appreciate it. I just want to add a little bit of color to the question that my colleague asked about the downtown library. I actually had several office hours on this topic, so I'm sure some of the info that I know and you're welcome to go, I, I livestreamed it. So it's on my Facebook page. So you could go watch it. But apparently, I guess the outcry really, one of the big sources of the outcry was that people didn't know. So people were surprised and they were like, wow, when did the downtown library become a homeless shelter? So that was kind of like the reaction. And there's a lot of details, but you could go watch it. And there were several people who participated in that. And the other thing that alarmed people was that apparently people were smoking in there too, right? And so those were the two kind of things that I heard from my officer. Now, I see staff shaking their head, but I don't know if it's true or not, but this is what people said during my office hours and you could go watch it yourself. And so I never saw it myself, but this is what people were telling me. So don't know. But if they are smoking, we should probably not let people smoke. It's probably not a good idea. Okay. And then, but I do have a question for you, which is you mentioned that people are concerned or are suffering through high utility rates. I don't know if you could tell me more, like how frequently, how high a percentage, like how, like do, are there a lot of people, just a few, you know, what is the, what is the, like maybe breakdown of this issue?
Well, we get complaints about the high utility rates and it's a lot of people who are on fixed income and yet they keep on going up. I can tell you from my experience, mine keeps on coming up, going up. I don't know.
We raised it like big time every year.
Yeah, I don't think the usage has gone up, you know, hopefully it's gone down. But that's why we want to explore. We are trying to act not from a knee jerk reaction, but we're, so we're trying to gather the data, you know, he, understand the problem, invite public comment to then act on it. So this is one of those topics that also we're hoping to learn more about it in the next year, but we are, we do get complaints.
Do you know how frequent those complaints are?
That I do not know.
Okay, I think it'd be good to, to keep track of it just because like when on the last round of rate increases and some, and some of them went up double digit, I had all my neighbors come by and say, hey, Greg, what's going on with this, right? And so, yeah, because I think there's a perception that everyone in Palo Alto is super rich and, you know, what's an extra $30, $40 or whatever. But it adds up and some people are on fixed income and some people really struggle to be here. So I really appreciate you guys listening. And I think, you know, I think a lot of people don't realize they can actually complain about it or say something because on council, we don't hear too much, right? This may be occasional comment, but not too much. So I think if, if, you know, you guys can, you know, listen and really understand and be the advocates for people who are struggling to be here, I think that'd be awesome. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Can I just go back to the overnight warming location? Because I think there were some misperceptions last year of what was happening at the, the library. So it was being used as a overnight warming location during times of inclement weather. And there was, there was some neighbor complaints and I have been able to speak with many of the, the neighbors regarding it. And I did watch your session and I appreciate that council member Tanaka and I know our, the person, the agency that is providing the staffing was able to be on the call and so forth. So for, for this year, what are we, what we are doing in anticipation of the cold weather season is we're going to have an open house for the Owl. So we are inviting any member of the public. Council members are welcome to come. We're going to have it set up so you'll see what it looks like inside the library. We're going to have information boards on what the rules are at the Owl, the questions we ask folks when they come into the, the site and have the members of the public, feel free to ask city staff or staff from the overnight warming location, any questions? So they can see, you know, the life-saving work that is, is happening in the libraries. So I, I just wanted to say, yes, I, I did watch it and thank you for your responsiveness to questions from the, the public. And we are definitely looking at addressing those with this, with this open house. So people can see what's happening inside.
Thank you for that clarification. I just want to also thank the Human Relations Commission and staff as well for all that you've done this year. I know it has been a challenging year and the HRC has, has done an incredible job at trying to help unify the community and listening to, to the community. Really appreciated the hate crimes event last week. It was an honor to be able to moderate that discussion and an incredible panel that you were able to put together of real experts here in Palo Alto and, and regionally. And I think it gave a chance for the community to get some of their questions answered and to learn about a pretty complex and often frustrating part of the law. And also glad to see on a, and I, I see great feedback from the community about the, about the event as well. And I'm glad that moving forward with, with trainings, I do think it's really critical that we do have specific trainings related to Islamophobia, anti-Arab hate, antisemitism. So having real specific training on those and, and working through the, the details and the nuance of that, as you spoke to, is going to be, I know, a challenge, but a really important one. And thing critical too for, you know, you didn't list council. I think it's critical that council will get those, those trainings as well as, as well as senior staff too. So thank you for everything you're, you're doing. I don't see any further light. So if we have a motion on the HRC work plan.
I'll move the approval of the HRC work. You don't, you called me, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll move the approval of the HRC work plan with great thanks to staff and Chair.
I'll second. I do want to add a friendly amendment if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I liked council member Bert's suggestion that we add a goal that we would get data from the rental registry. Did you have a way to phrase that?
Yes, assuming that we will have data within this fiscal year to request the HRC to do a preliminary review and to begin to formulate any recommendations to the council they would have based upon that data.
Yes, very good.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, but I, with your permission, would ask if there's any positive or negative reaction to that amendment from the Chair.
Yeah, the HRC welcomes that.
Thank you. No, I don't think I need to speak further.
Okay.
We were just saying that if we do not get the data if, before our next work plan, we'll make sure it's in the next work plan. But we're planning on it. Again, this work plan was created in March of last year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tanaka?
Yeah, I, I'm going to ask to split that out because I'm not going to vote for that. I, I don't think we want to do this and I voted against it originally. So, but I, I suppose the rest, the rest of the HRC, not, not the amendment that was being proposed.
All right, we'll split the motion for purposes of voting for the friendly amendment. All right. Do you know further lights? Let's take the vote.
Voting on the first main motion. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Haynes?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Ku?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Bert?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Voting on the second part of the motion. Councilmember Lithgow Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka? Councilmember Bert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Mayor Stone? Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Sorry, on this motion, can we just make sure it's clear that this is a preliminary review of the rental registry data? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. All right, next up, looks like it's going to be Planning and Transportation Commission? No? What?
ARB.
ARB, never mind. ARB.
At your pleasure, Mayor, but we were going to start with the Architecture Review Board.
Let's do it.
Okay. So, good evening, Jonathan Late, Director for Planning and Development Services. Sitting next to me is Stephen Switzer. Did I get that right?
Yes.
You did.
Okay. Stephen's joined us. Six months, all right. We got a lot of new faces in our department. So, so Stephen has actually taken on the responsibility of being the liaison to both the Architecture Review Board and the Historic Resources Board. This is a recent change. So Stephen's here to join me, and Steve, why don't you introduce our ARB Chair?
All right, well, good evening. Our HRB Chair is Kendra Rosenberg, and she will be attending a remote this evening, so if we could add her on the presentation, that'd be great.
Yes, good evening, council members. I'm hoping you guys can hear me okay. And I apologize for not being in chambers this evening. My son has actually been sick today, and I figured nobody would want to catch that, so chose to stay home and do this from here. Is everyone able to hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect, great. And then Stephen, do you want me to go ahead and get started with the presentation?
That would be great. And you can just let us know when we need to advance the slides.
Perfect, okay. Good evening, council members. Just to say a brief review, we are part of the Architectural Review Board in Palo Alto. The Architectural Review Board is composed of five members, at least three of whom are required to be architects, landscape architects, building designers, or other design professionals. We currently have five members. We've got myself, Kendra Rosenberg, currently serving as Chair, Yingxi Chen as Vice Chair, Peter Baltay, David Hirsch, and Musim Adcock. The Architectural Review Board reviews and makes recommendations to the Planning Director on the building design, site planning, landscape planning, massing and facades, material selection, lighting, signage, and other related issues for most major new construction, including additions and renovations that alter the exterior of building facades. The type of buildings reviewed include commercial, industrial, multifamily residential. In addition, the ARB is a resource of knowledge, is a resource as knowledgeable observers of many varied urban environments to assist Palo Alto as it develops area plans and to accommodate additional housing. So let's go to the next slide, if that's all right. So over the course of the year, we reviewed approximately 20 projects, including two major public projects, the fire station at 3600 Middlefield Road, advanced water for purification system at 2501 Embarcadero, which we'll see an image of later in the presentation. Many multifamily residential projects, which, as you all know, we are in a bit of a housing crunch and a crisis, I guess I should say, in Palo Alto, along with the rest of the state. And we are trying to make sure that we are increasing our housing as rapidly as feasibly possible, while maintaining the respect of the current residents of Palo Alto and an understanding of what our supply and utility systems are capable of handling. On that note, we did do multifamily residential projects with approximately 450 new units, including BMR units, about 223 units. And in addition to that, we've done about 37,000 square feet of commercial projects this year. We have provided feedback to assist council on SB nine standards and objective standards for townhouse style designs. As you know, we also, on a slight aside from this, was the SB 330 and builders remedy situations that went through based on a state level that we were forced to deal with at city level at Palo Alto. And we, because of the capacity of standards that we've now set into place, we are seeing that that SB 330, as it will continue on, won't have new builders remedy projects coming in. They will be complying with our objective standards that we have put in place. We have, number two is we've pre-approved parklet designs. So for, you know, since COVID-19, we've seen an influx of parklets, especially in the downtown Palo Alto area, California Avenue area. And we have made it a point to come up with a series of designs to streamline the process for getting those parklets approved. They were embraced wholeheartedly by most of the public, and people really liked them. The restaurateurs liked them, and many of the other retail spaces enjoyed them as well. So we are seeing a lot of those becoming permanent fixtures in the area. We wanted to streamline the process for getting them approved, as well as make them all more cohesive to one another. The dark skies and bird-friendly design ordinances we have provided feedback on, I do believe those conversations are still ongoing. We have had several meetings about that, and we are looking to neighboring towns to, to try and make sure that we're in alignment with some of these neighboring towns' rules and regulations as well, because birds don't care what the city borders are. And the dark skies, you know, light pollution from one town over doesn't stop just because of a city border. So we are keeping an eye on neighboring towns, what they are doing, and where we, as a city, should be falling into place with that. And finally, we're working on the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan, also known as NVCAP. That has been an ongoing, very extensive project. It's had a lot of city resident input, and we think that it's actually going in a really good direction thus far. Next slide, please. Just to review some of our projects that we have provided input on, you can see on the left are the initial proposals, and on the right are the final designs. So we've got 3200 Park Boulevard as the one on the top there, providing a bit more interest in our minds and a bit more variation to really enhance the design and make that a more inviting space and a bit more of an elegant design. 3001 El Camino Real, similar scope of work, and again, sort of make the design a bit more friendly and a bit more elevated. Next slide, please. 123 Sherman Avenue, that was in downtown, excuse me, mid California Avenue area of Palo Alto. And you can see that the design that was originally proposed was predominantly glass, felt very corporate. And by softening the borders, adding the landscaping in and altering some of the materials on the ground level, it makes it a much more inviting streetscape and a much more interesting building. And then the last one in our presentation here for tonight is the 2501 Embarcadero Road. This is the water treatment facility. Originally, it came to us with a bright red roof that we felt was inappropriate being next to the Baylands. And while a very necessary facility to have, it also has requirements for high lighting output that would potentially bother the Baylands inhabitants, AKA the animals and critters that live out there, and especially the birds that will be flying and being in that space as well. So that was one of those that, there was a lot of attention paid to exactly how this was going to be illuminated, where the facility would sit, and the streetscape of how people walking down this pathway towards the duck pond would experience this project. Next slide. So our work plan that's been approved by the ARB on April 4th has five specific goals in mind. One is to review planning applications for conformance with ARB standards and objective standards. That's continual. You know, that's something that we continue to do, and we take our job very seriously. We think that Palo Alto is a beautiful city, and we would like to continue for it to be so. And part of the reason that it is beautiful is because we have a high quality of standard of architecture and its design, especially on facade-facing properties or high impact. So San Antonio, El Camino, Stanford Shopping Center, et cetera. Number two is assist the city with any modifications to objective standards in Chapter 18.24. Suggest better ways to address different housing typology. As the city continues to grow and try to meet its housing numbers, there are different types of housing that will be required. Efficiency units are great. We can max our, we can hit numbers of how many units we get very quickly. But we'd like to encourage families in Palo Alto. We have always been a very family-oriented town, and we'd like to continue to be so. So the concept of needing townhouses, in addition to, you know, more efficiency units and some below-market rate, you know, we want to see the below-market rate going across the board, not just in these hyper-efficiency units, but also in townhomes and sort of these larger scope works that will be seen. Also, as the typologies are processed through, we will begin to come to terms with some of the unintended consequences of the way that the objective standards are written. As much as we've done very thoughtful work and very thorough work to this point, there's always unintended consequences of how things are written or how someone tries to get around the rules as written. So we will be able to face those as they come in, and as we see them being processed over time, and we'll be able to respond to them accordingly. Number three, discuss specific coordinated area plans caps. The ARB would recommend exploring to implement. Provide comments on caps if council directs staff to prepare caps. So for example, we do have an area in San Antonio way that, you know, amongst us as the ARB board, we have talked about it should potentially be reviewed as a, as a coordinated area plan, since there's so much work going on all at the same time right now. And if these properties were, were more coordinated from the get-go, we would be able to have a specific pullout area for Amazon truck drivers. We'd have better facility flow-through for their garbage facility pickup, instead of having it all being along San Antonio. Again, those are just items that we sort of speculated about, but we don't have in the works at this time. And so as they do have more solidification on which areas should be reviewed as coordinated area plans, we will be discussing that on ARB and of course with the city council. Number four, provide feedback to staff and council on the creation of new guidelines, ordinances, and/or streetscapes. For example, roof terraces, bird-safe glazing, dark sky lighting, and parklets. These will always be ongoing, as we will always have something new to come up. One of the items right now is roof terraces is a sort of hot-ticket item, because as we are starting to max out our footprint areas on the soil with ADUs and things like that, that are, and SB nines also are allowing the footprints to grow, we really want to maintain a lot of our outdoor feel in Palo Alto. I mean, our city symbol is a tree, and people here really enjoy the greenage and the foliage, and we do not want to become a concrete jungle. So roof terraces is one of the possible ways of making sure that people who live in some of these larger complexes have access to the outdoors in a very efficient and beautiful way. Number five, improve coordination between the ARB and other boards, commissions, and council. And I did want to read on our work plan, I've got another note here that I did want to touch base on. So part of what's going on with the coordination is that there are times that the ARB feels that we get limited feedback from what the other councils have done, and it feels a little bit more jerky than maybe it should be. So we're going to be taking a big point at this juncture to make sure that for the, for the future of this year, that we are really looking into getting more feedback from staff, and staff has been graciously offered to help assist us in this, to get summary reports from PTC, HRB, and bring them back to, and from city council, obviously, and bring it back to the ARB. So we're a little bit more informed as to what happened in recent timelines. Often, we just get a report that this project saw so-and-so on this date, and we don't get as much information on what actually happened. So staff has been great about trying to make sure that we have more information moving forward. There's also some conversation about appointing an HRB, PTC, and council liaisons to the ARB to facilitate communication, so that's something that we'll be discussing further in the year. Next slide, I believe that's it for now. There we go. All right, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. We have a public comment for the ARB work plan?
No, Mayor, there are no requests to speak and no hands are raised.
Okay, then we'll turn to the dice. Questions? Vice Mayor.
Thanks very much, very thorough and very concise. You've got a big workload.
We do.
I want to ask questions specifically about, first of all, number three, and I'm going to ask a similar question to PTC. But as you well know, you've got four or five area plans here. They're all multi-year plans, generally multimillion dollars, and things like San Antonio, we need to start building sometime next week. So the question is, have you yet considered some sort of mini-area plans? Are there other ways to, you know, get, so we can make some zoning decisions and some building decisions without saying, you know, we'll get back to you in four years?
Great question. For the long and the short answer is that we do have to follow all the, you know, stepping points along the way, and sometimes it just does take a while. The smaller stepping stones of doing smaller areas at a time can be a little bit more complicated, because again, you're sort of piecemealing something together. And the goal of these coordinated area plans is that we really have a larger swath that we're tackling all at once, so that it really truly is coordinated, instead of a piecemeal approach. But that is definitely something that I'll bring back to the board, and we can discuss further, and see if there are targeted areas that we could potentially dig into a bit faster. Because you're right, we absolutely need some of these coordinated area plans six months to a year ago, especially thinking about San Antonio, is that we've got three projects back-to-back there that none of them are coordinated with each other. And if they had been, it'd be a much more efficient route down that corridor as it develops forward. But yeah, I'll definitely make note of that and bring that back to the board.
Okay, thank you. I also had some clarification questions on that item number five that you just recapped.
Please.
It sounds like that first bullet point there about PTC, ARB, and HRB summaries is among staff helping out, and that seems to be underway. I didn't understand the second one very well. Take direct feedback from ARB for council, or council approval is required. Sir, I'm looking over my screen here to get to your screen.
Stephen, would you mind pulling up the presentation again, back to that slide?
Sure, we can get the presentation pulled up in a moment. Bear with us.
A representative of the board to council is basically what it says, so that's curious. I'd like an explanation.
So oftentimes, we don't sit in on city council meetings, and that there's the possibility of having, you know, this is something that, again, I would, I apologize, because this is something that's been brought up before, and I don't have the full scope of information on it, other than that it has been brought up with the context that previously, again, I wasn't here on the board at the time, but apparently previously there were liaison members that actually would sit in on other meetings and report back. So I don't, not super clear if that was somebody that was part of the ARB, or if it was a staff member that was helpful in that regard. What we've come to understand at this time is that the staff will be helping, because they're always on all of these meetings and boards, and that they are able to facilitate that communication in a bit more of an efficient manner, rather than appointing a separate person to attend every meeting and sit on two boards at once, you know, for all intents and purposes. Not sit on the board, but to listen into the meetings of two separate boards and report back in that way. So since we already have the staff who does that anyway, that was sort of the, the understanding of this. So I'm hoping that that answers the question.
Okay, yeah, and I won't go on, but you're raising important questions about, you know, communication and coordinating between boards, so that, you know, you're not overlapping, which sometimes has happened, no, no question about it. So I think we need to think about how we field these communication questions, but I think it's probably going to be, you know, processed through the respective departments, like, you know, Mr. Late's department and, and others would be kind of the way to sort of surface it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes, just briefly, because Vice Mayor Lowing asked, as is often the case, a couple of the questions I had. So thank you for that. I just wanted to follow up on the second one, which is recommendation five. And if we look at the packet, where it appears on page 326, it's noted that applicants often feel that they are running a gauntlet of approvals rather than facing a coordinated review. And so one of the bullets there says, "Request staff to schedule joint preliminary discussions between the ARB, PTC, and HRB Chairs and Vice Chairs on projects of common interest." "These preliminary meetings would not be to review specifics of a project, rather they would serve to coordinate the review process between boards and planning staff." And so, on the one hand, I like that, because it seems like we're trying to get at what is sometimes referred to as the Palo Alto Process, and that can drag on. And so that's great to try to streamline it, both for staff, because they have a lot to do, and for our residents. But I wanted to, it's also sometimes that can be a practical problem, and we're adding some meetings. So I just wanted to get some feedback from staff on that and/or from the chair, if there's more to it than what I'm reading here in the report. So I'd just like to hear more about that from both, whoever wants to go first.
Sure, if it's all right with Stephen, I'm going to defer to you to answer that. That's all right.
Sure, and I'll, I'll take that. So I, I do think that, so we're always open to ideas on how we could make the process easier and, you know, more coordinated. I, I do think that there are, there are a couple of projects that get on people's radar because they may be cumbersome in some way, and it looks like there may be this complicated process to traverse in order to get to a conclusion. And I wouldn't be surprised if the comments that this, on the packet page that you referenced is, I'd be surprised if it wasn't referring to a PC or a planned home zoning application, because we do have a couple of those that are going through the process now and have been going through it for quite some time. PC or a planned home zoning application because we do have a couple of those that are going through the process now and have been going through it for quite some time. And I believe that the applicants have expressed some concerns. And I'm sure that the boards and the commissions have, you know, it's a pending application that they've seen several times. And so the way those applications go is that there's a necessary stop before the city council and then it goes to the planning commission and then back to the architecture review board. In one project that I'm thinking of in particular, they changed direction and then had to go back to the architecture review board and then we'll be coming back to the PTC. So it creates this perception of a difficult process and I will acknowledge that the PhD process is not an efficient way of advancing any any development, let alone a housing development through the city. So the good news is we do have objective standards and we have made changes to our zoning regulations. The city councils endorse those and we're looking at additional ways to streamline and incentivize certain projects that would go through a much more streamlined review process. That said, we're always open to, so I won't want to make a lot of, you know, changes based on a PhD or PC application process, which is a very discreet type of process. But if there are other application types that people are struggling with, I definitely would like to hear that.
Okay, great. And I guess what I'm wondering specifically is whether these preliminary meetings seem like a good idea or are they redundant with with the process at hand? I mean, is this something where do we stand with respect to this recommendation number five from the commission?
So what I what I take from this recommendation is that there is a desire to have more communication between and amongst the boards and sort of direction and actions that the city council has taken. And so what I rather than bring the boards and commissions necessarily together at certain meetings, which we have done from time to time, perhaps there's a way for staff to, as we do with I know with the planning and transportation commission and perhaps with the ARB and HRB, an opportunity to have a communication at the beginning that talks about work that's been done from these other boards and commissions that may have some overlap or some items that we're working through. We can actually schedule discussions to talk about things as specific topics come up. So I see this less as bringing the boards and commissions together for meetings and more of staff taking a role in trying to cross share information among the board, among the board members.
Okay, so it sounds like the preliminary meetings with the chairs and vice chairs aren't something that I mean, that's just how I read this. So either we read it differently or you're thinking it's not the greatest recommendation. I'm just trying to discern.
I think that, you know, there certainly could be the opportunity for chairs to come together and meet and staff could be a part of those conversations. That's that's not problematic. I think we'd want to be clear about the topics that we wanted to discuss and really understand where the overlap was.
And I was just taking I was just pleased to see that the effort to try to streamline here and was just trying to understand if that's something that makes sense on a go forward basis. I also realized this plan was probably approved in April. So they're probably, I don't know if there's been any efforts toward this in the interim, but I don't know. Chair Rosenberg, if you have any comments about that?
Unfortunately, I do not. We haven't had a big step forward in any of this at this time, other than having people sit in on some of the meetings and listen in for things that they think are pertinent. I would say that there are to staff's comment that, you know, for running the gauntlet, that there's several projects that probably are a little bit more finicky in terms of how they will process regardless. That's likely to be true. We are not, I want to be very clear, the ARB is not looking to make redundancies. We're not looking to, you know, have extra meetings to put on a ton of extra work for people's times. We really just want to make sure there's a bit more coordination. And whatever the most efficient way to do that is, we'd be very open to that conversation. It's just difficult at this time because there's moments where we'll hear a presentation and then we don't know where it ever goes, right? So we'll make a recommendation from ARB. It goes back to council unless we're following it in the newspapers and following the 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 city schedules on a regular basis, it could get heard and we wouldn't know and then we don't have any follow up. So it's really just more about just making sure that we're more in touch and more in tune with what's going on with city council. And that's just something that we feel we should be doing. So trying to find the most efficient way to do that is definitely the goal.
Well, that's great because I think that's everyone's goal. So I wish you luck and good works in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you. So at a high level, I'd just like to commend the commission for really attempting to look strategically at at what we have going forward and move out of a reactive mode that we all find ourselves in too much. And in particular, the anticipation that it will be valuable to review our objective standards because the notion that we can anticipate and figure out how they're going to work out all in advance and that they worked perfectly is overly ambitious and this is much more realistic that we will learn in as we apply them and want to be prepared to adjust accordingly. And then I'm pleased that that they're really looking at exploring the coordinated area plans, which that for me potentially ties in between three and five. When I was looking at five and the coordination with other boards, I hadn't anticipated this kind of prelim informal discussion on projects. I was thinking more about policy and strategic things like a coordinated area plan and that early in the process to have joint meetings, study sessions between the ARB and the PTC, like on a coordinated area plan or major policy issues as they move forward. And I think that would help have that that not only a more efficient process for staff and even the community and to move things forward more expeditiously, but it would allow those bodies to hear from each other. I know from my years on the planning commission, there was kind of a too much of a disconnect between the ARB and the planning commission where we had overlapping purviews and it would really benefit each of us to to have really greater engagement. And then one thing that may, we may want to specifically put here, but it's anticipatory, which is next week we have a colleague's memo on referring aesthetic standards to cell towers. And that would, I presume, go on to the ARB's work plan for the year. And so maybe we should have a placeholder. Can't put, make it official action until the council actually determines whether a majority of the council wants to refer that. But same time, we don't have another opportunity to lay out a work plan for the year. And that might be a significant item for the ARB. So maybe we could put it in there as a contingent on on council direction. Thanks. Sorry, tonight.
Thank you for that.
I'd like to move the ARB work plan. If it counts, my burden, you can add that.
Yeah, I will move the ARB work plan and to add a sixth item that would be review of aesthetic standards for cell towers contingent on city council direction to do so. And I have no other comments except keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Second?
Would like to speak to your second, Councilmember Lithgow Ames. Okay. I'm seeing no other lights. When the clerk is ready, you can take the vote.
Councilmember Lithgow Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you to the council for your time and attention and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here. All right. So next is the Historic Resources Board.
Good evening again. I have the pleasure to introduce our chair, Alyssa Eagleson Cheslevich, and I will turn over the presentation to her.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name's Alyssa Eagleson Cheslevich and I'm the Chair of the Historic Resources Board. We also have here tonight Vice Chair Samantha Roman. And then our other board members are Caroline Willis, Christian Pease and Gedda Zalinska joined us just last meeting for the first time. The Historic Resources Board's purview is to render advice and guidance to property owners on alterations to historic buildings to inform the ARB to the historical and architectural significance of structures within Palo Alto and also to submit recommendations to the ARB on alterations to historic structures. And then also we recommend to council the designation of buildings and districts as historic. And I think we can, next slide. So in the fiscal year 2023, 24 work plan, our accomplishments include we met objective goals one, two and four. Goal one is an ongoing initiative to conduct historic reviews of properties with proposed work, category upgrade requests and then also to clarify the bulletin that's available to property owners on through the website and through the planning department about alterations to historic structures and which structures are covered by the need to seek approval for alterations. Goal number two is Comp Plan Policy 7.2 to determine the eligibility of properties for the California Register of Historical Resources. And then goal four was to improve outreach materials and review incentives along with community input. We also completed goal number three and this was probably our largest initiative of the previous year. And that was providing recommendations on nominations related to the 2023 Historic Reconnaissance Survey. That involved an inventory update of 165 properties that had previously been found eligible for listing on the California State or National Registers. Therefore also making them eligible for the Palo Alto local inventory. And so we reviewed those properties and ultimately some of them were added to the local inventory in Palo Alto. And then we discussed the council's direction. This is a grew out of that inventory update, but we discussed the council's direction to explore alternatives to the label potentially eligible on parcel reports. We received a lot of community feedback during the inventory update that some of that language was confusing. So we've been discussing ways to you know, improve that language to alleviate some of that public confusion. And then in support of goal five, we prepared a letter to council, which we have since sent all of you regarding a tailored Mills Act pilot program. Palo Alto does not have currently a Mills Act program and it's one of the major tools that cities in California use to promote historic preservation. And so we've, we've designed a pilot proposal for you to look at and consider is a possible avenue for establishing a program like that. And then next slide, please. And then our upcoming year's work plan includes the following. First, we would like to make some limited modifications to Palo Alto Municipal Code 16.49 to provide some clarification on the HRB's role. And that's, that's primarily in terms of how properties are nominated for the local inventory and also how the HRB works as a part of the process for exterior modifications of historic structures. And that's to clarify the HRB's goal and also to, you know, help allay some of the concerns we heard during the inventory review process this previous year about potential governmental overreach. Item two is creating new user-friendly resources and communication regarding historic preservation. And that's creating user-friendly resources for community members to access that involves learning about which structures may be eligible for the use of the historic building code, what that allows them to do, other local and state incentives and really try to make accessing that that material easier and more straightforward. And then if we are able to extend that initiative, it could involve new and new informational resources for the public like videos or trainings. Item three involves conducting a survey of the local inventory resources listed prior to the 2023 reconnaissance survey. So these are properties that were already on the local inventory. And this is really just kind of cleaning up that local inventory to remove structures that have been demolished and to remove or reclassify structures that have been significantly altered. Many of these haven't been looked at potentially since they were added in nineteen, the late 1970s. So it would be really cleaning up the inventory to reflect subsequent changes. Item number four is looking at the possibility of adding some preservation incentives. That's, this is another thing that grew out of the Historic Reconnaissance Survey this last year and the inventory update. We heard a lot from property owners that the incentives that are available currently weren't didn't really apply to them, that they weren't helpful to their situation and they didn't make listing their property more attractive. So we're interested in exploring if there are other things that the city could offer that that may fill that need. And then finally, we're interested as item number five in having historic preservation, potentially having a historic preservation awards program offered through the city to recognize structures that have been exceptionally well preserved, that really contribute to the character of the city. And this would really be to have initial discussions about what that sort of program would look like, how those properties would be identified and how frequently those sorts of awards would be given. So that's, I think that's the work plan for this coming year and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Perceive there's any public comment on the HRB work plan?
No, Mayor, there are no requests to speak and no hands are raised.
We'll turn it back to council. Councilmember?
Thank you. Well, thanks for the update and I, I want to lend my support to the concept of the Historic Preservation Awards. Really, we do have a lot of really significant historic buildings in our community and they're often underappreciated. So that's great. And then I did want to note on the on the Mills Act, I'm glad that you're going to be looking at it. We actually about, I don't know, 14 years ago took a look at it and it was shot down principally because at the time this school district asserted that it would be an impact on their finances and it was a very something like $60,000 a year estimated. They were in less good shape at the time and asserted, well, every dollar matters to us. And it became then, therefore, we only had one value, which was their budget versus what we could incentivize in historic preservation. Their financial situation is quite different. They're in a strong financial situation generally right now and and I, so I think the time is right to reconsider it and thanks for bringing that up.
Councilmember Koo?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do. And I'm really excited that you have a staff member who has some, who has background in historical buildings and also SEQA as well as the preservation laws. I wanted to also ask that when you're considering some of the processes that you include in there, when a project comes through that it goes through HRB first. when a project comes through that it goes through HRB first, and then you make the recommendation to the other committees such as ARB or PTC. So I think that process needs to be stated clearly as well, so that doesn't get decided in another commission before you have determined the historic value of the property itself. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, just way in. Appreciate all the work that you've done. I really like the idea of increased incentives. I think that's the best direction to take here, is try to incentivize residents for the historical preservation. And I think the Historical Preservation Awards is a wonderful idea. I assume other communities do that as well? Okay, great. So yeah, seems like something that we should be doing as well and really celebrate the incredible historic structures that we have in the community and find ways that we can be able to really celebrate them as well. I know, you know, we do have so much great history here. One thing I'd like to see is us maybe create additional opportunities for the public to be able to know, kind of know what's out there through various historical tours, through Professoreville, or, and I've heard Councilmember Burt talk about this before, that we have so many incredible sites of historical interest, especially to the tech sector in town, but I think we do a really poor job at notifying people of that. And so if there are ways that we can maybe improve historical plaques or maybe virtual tours or whatnot, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities that could also increase interest in tourism coming into Palo Alto or then hopefully encourage more people to be able to shop and eat in our kind of historical course. So maybe something to consider as well for the year. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, thank you for your guys' work. One issue I wanted to just highlight for you, and you may know about this already, is, and stop me if I go too deep if you know this, which is there are some people who are concerned that their home might be potentially on the eligible list. And I think it's one thing that people embrace this and, you know, want to be on the list, and they have a historic home and all that kind of stuff. But some people just want to have an ordinary house. And then when there's this cloud of a potentially eligible over them, it makes it tough to sell, you know, tough to just do normal things. And so have you heard much about this?
Yes. And, you know, part of the confusion, it does stem from the potentially eligible language that's on the parcel reports, and we are working to update that language to clarify it. The potentially eligible designation has to do with SEQA. And so it really is something that a home that's potentially eligible for consideration under SEQA does need a certain level of evaluation before there's a determination one way or the other, and that really is tied to SEQA.
Okay. I guess I'd rather see like an opt-in versus a, versus like you have to opt out. And because I heard, and, you know, I don't know as much details as probably you guys do, but I heard that opting out can be really, really expensive. You have to pay like thousands of dollars to opt out. And it makes it hard for you to sell the house, and it's like, it's kind of a... And for a lot of people, the home is the largest asset they have. And so it's kind of a, it's something which is making a lot of people nervous. And I've had, I don't know, five or six office hours on this very topic. And so I know that a lot of people in the community are very concerned, so I think we need to make it so that it's easy for people to opt out versus not to pay a ton of money to consultants to opt out, because I think that's a little crazy.
So, Councilmember, if I may, we're going to have a update for the City Council on this topic within the next two to four weeks.
Okay. Well, I think I'll make sure that people in the community know about it, and I think we just got to make the process very simple and straightforward and transparent and, you know, don't cause people a lot of headaches.
See no further lights. Anybody interested in making a motion?
I'll move to approve the Historic Resources Board's 2024-2025 work plan.
I'll second. Did he speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
I don't need to speak to my second. I see no more lights, so let's take the vote.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lethcott-Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our last work plan of the evening, the Planning and Transportation Commission. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So Brian and Chang with the Planning and Transportation Commission will give this presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So Planning and Transportation this year, or last year, was made up of Doria Suma. Doria Suma is Chair, myself is Vice Chair, Bart Heckman, Keith Rectal, Carrie Templeton, Alan Aiken, and George Lu. As you well know, the mission of the Planning and Transportation Commission is to advise City Council, the Planning Director, and the Chief Transportation Official on land use and transportation matters, including the comprehensive plan, zoning, transportation programs, and a host of other things, including certain ordinances that must come before the PTC, before they move on to council, and a number of entitlements. So could I have the next slide, please? Next slide. Oh, there we go. All right. So last year, although now it's almost two years ago, we worked on a whole bunch of things, including study sessions that I think then made their way to you on electrification and the noise ordinance changes that needed to be made for that, parklets. We reviewed a number of entitlement projects, most of which were housing. Actually, I think in 2023-24, they were all housing. So I think you heard the numbers that Chair Rosenberg mentioned, but there are eight different housing projects. We completed transportation goals around road safety, the Palo Alto Link pilot, the BikePed transportation plan. We looked at Crescent Park traffic calming. And then with respect to planning, we completed planning goals relating to retail revitalization, the NVCAP, which you all voted on as well. Hold on, my screen just went away. Okay, there we go. The housing element, hooray. State laws, there's a lot of laws that change at the state level that then require corresponding changes in local ordinance. And then a little bit on residential parking programs. Actually, no, let me see. Sorry, not parking programs, I'm getting confused there. Rental registry production. There's some administrative stuff that we do regarding capital planning and the annual reports associated with those. And then a couple other things to note. There's the Train Quiet Zone at Palo Alto Ave that we hope will get extended all along Palo Alto. Congregation-based safe parking, a review of the new tree ordinance in which we tried to make some changes after some unforeseen consequences. And the advanced water purification system plant over out in the Baylands. Next slide. Oh, some fun pictures for us. Palo Alto Link and, you know, BikePed safety. Look at all those teens with their helmets. Next slide. More fun pictures, so the NVCAP and all the different zoning there, as well as the retail revitalization study, which I don't think has made its way all the way to the council. It's made its way to council ad hoc. We were hoping that things would move faster, but I'm not quite sure what all happened there. I think a lot of, my suspicion is a lot of housing element-related implementation happened. All right. Next slide. Okay, so for next year, and really it's now just another half year, we've actually made a lot of progress already on these goals that we had for 24-25. The first one is road safety, which I know we're all really passionate about. And what this slide doesn't go far enough to say is that our goal is to reduce the killed or seriously injured collisions to zero, and that's really important. The second is to continue to work on retail revitalization, and hopefully that will make its way to you soon. We do think that there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, and I know that staff is hard at work at some of those things, such as working on cleanliness and signage, public safety for our big retail corridors. But we also think that there's a lot that can be done fairly rapidly on loosening requirements, or loosening the rules against chain stores and relaxing some of the parking requirements. And these are things that can really easily be done. So also, our third goal, it's a big one, area planning. And unfortunately, this is one of the goals where we haven't made any progress yet. We haven't seen anything yet. And I think I ask you as City Council to, you know, this is a big resource and budget ask, and that's, I think, where we need help. The housing element program implementation has progressed quite a bit already. We've rezoned. There's a bunch of other things that we've done. Those ordinance, I think, are things that you've already voted on. Then there's, again, there should be more coming to you with respect to implementing state laws. And we're waiting to hear from Parking and Transportation about parking programs. So that is one of the items, number six, that we have not made as much progress on so far. We've got another half a year to do it. And then there's been quite, we've heard some study sessions on the Bike and Ped transportation plan, as well as for number eight, Comp Plan implementation. This is particularly around three things. It's a streamside corridor recommendation that was made in the Comp Plan many years ago and that we're finally getting to, as well as dark skies ordinances and bird-friendly design. And so these pieces are where either surrounding jurisdictions or other states are doing way better than we are, so it's about time that we do it. I was really impressed to see Texas, which is not known as a bastion of environmental friendliness, has some pretty amazing dark skies ordinances in some of its cities. I think that's it for my slides. All right. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment first.
No request to speak, and no hands are raised.
Return to the dais. Councilmember Burt?
Yes, thanks. I only have just one suggestion, which is under the Comp Plan Policy Implementation. I've, for years, tried to get us to take the time to look at deconstructing what worked and what didn't work in previous comprehensive plan processes. When we started the NVCAP plan, that I suggested to the then-council, and what we have had is this notion that we always have enough time to do it over, but never enough time to do it right from the outset. And when we talk about how long these take, I'm convinced that one of the factors is that we didn't spend enough time at the outset looking at how to design the process effectively enough. And since we're now hopefully entering a period of a series of coordinated area plans, that would be really additionally valuable is to create our own template for the process. They may not be identical, and each process may not be identical for each coordinated area plan, but I think it would be really beneficial to do that. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much, Chair Chang. PTC gets a lot of stuff done. I give you the reward for the most small type to fit in everything that you did last year, including the housing element, which was, we all know, quite an assignment. A lot of the stuff that PTC gets is prescribed because it's got to be done before it comes to us. I do want to raise the same question I raised to the ARB on the area plan issue. And as Councilmember Burt noted, that's a pretty good area for those two commissions to have a chat. But, you know, we're all aware of how long it takes and how much money it costs, and you can't snap your fingers on that. But if there's a way that we could get a start on some things that you guys could bubble up from one of those highly productive ad hoc committees, it would help the planning staff, would help us. So I encourage you to talk to ARB and, you know, see what could happen there. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that I really appreciate on the issue of retail, number, whatever that is, two, you note there that this is an impactful body of work, the need to get it right is really important. There's kind of a knee-jerk reaction sometimes in Palo Alto, let's just get it done. It's been too long. That's wrong. We need to get it right. On the retail, the first thing we saw for downtown retail was rejected outright. It just wasn't ready for prime time from the Public Works Department. So appreciate you processing that in the right way and, you know, coming back to us with, a little bit later, with, you know, really thought-out, objective ways that we can move forward on that. So that's a, all commissions should follow that. So, you know, let's get it right before we send it off to council. And then this is a situation for all commissions, and it may not affect PTC as much, but it's something that we have to do better up here, which is, you know, get these things approved when they're submitted. This was approved, or this was submitted in April, and we're now heading towards November. In the case of PTC, does that slow down your process? Are you just on green lights and you're going?
Well, like I said, I think where it's, where we could use this council's greatest assistance, and the ARB as well, is with respect to area planning, because that is a staffing and budgeting issue, a massive staffing and budgeting issue. And our poor staff has been, you know, overwhelmed, shall I say, with all that work for the housing element, and my hat goes off to them for putting in all that work. But then it means that there's other priorities that need to be rejiggered. And as you mentioned, Vice Mayor, the time for the area plans was yesterday. We've already got several projects that have gone through, and we on the PTC have all lamented, well, gee, I wish we had, you know, some plan here for a bike lane or for ground floor retail. But because we don't have that plan, we're approving the projects piecemeal and have no guidelines on which to do it. So even if we, as the commission, might want a bike lane or want ground floor retail, there's no grounds on which to ask an applicant to do that. So it's pretty critical that we try and do something about those as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you for that feedback. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Winker?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Vice Chair Chang, for the report and the work that the PTC does year-round. I wasn't, I didn't have a comment until I listened to Councilmember Burt, and I just want to echo and underscore that, and also Vice Mayor Lowing. I, these area plans and planning things are sometimes somewhat of a black box to me. You know, we gather input, some consultants or somebody do something with it, and, I don't know, put it together somehow and present it back. What I would hope we can try to do here, and this goes with the "don't rush it" piece, is gather that and then let people react to it, whether it's, you know, the bodies, the PTC, the ARB, or whomever, whether it's residents again, and just any process I've been involved with where we're trying to build some broad consensus around goals, you want people to move to second judgment. It's kind of like what Councilmember Lethcott-Hames mentioned at the Sibling Cities Town Hall. We took a poll first, people talked and listened, take another poll, and lo and behold, ideas have changed. And it's that second judgment that I think is so important, that I hope we can find some processes to capture. So I want to thank my colleagues for prompting that thought, and I hope that we can find a way to live into it as a city.
Councilmember Lethcott-Hames?
I want to thank you for your work.
I want to thank you for your work, Vice Chair. And it's painfully obvious in tonight's conversation how wonderfully obvious it is that the ARB and the PTC in particular should have the opportunity to interact far more frequently. We could streamline processes, we could figure this out to the betterment of the city and to create greater efficiencies for both the commissions and staff and council. I certainly don't have the magic wand, the magic answer as to how to do that. I will say it broke my heart to hear Chair Rosenberg say, or to remind us that there are three projects on San Antonio already, you know, headed down the road and we don't have a coordinated area plan. So my question actually there, and perhaps it's for Director Late, I'm not sure. How does that work when you develop a coordinated area plan, but there's something in the pipeline that existed, that was approved or sketched out before the plan was in place? How do we work around them and that? Is it just two different things? Or do we, is there, is there some hope that we can fold them into the plan as it materializes? Obviously, whenever you're doing coordinated area plan, you've got existing buildings in place. You have your streetscape, your landscape and so on. But for these new projects that are just beginning, that don't yet exist and will come into emergence as the plan itself does, what can we do to try to bring them along, even though they basically started their process before we did?
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I think in, so this happens all the time, right? The city is always changing, we're always getting applications in. We had it with the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan where, you know, we'd asked the question, do we want to pause on some development while we work through that plan? And, and we didn't. All right, that was the conclusion is that we wanted to continue to work on those. So to some degree, the city council has an opportunity to think about that in the context of San Antonio. I do think it's a little bit different for housing projects, which we, we won't have the same authority under state law to, to not move forward with those if they get filed. But I think that the, the PTC and staff have been very cognizant of those projects on San Antonio as they have been filed and processed. We do have a special setback on San Antonio that we've been adhering to and where projects have wanted to encroach into that area. There are conditions that require the applicant to remove a stair encroachment or things along those lines. So to the extent that we've been able to incorporate those projects into a future vision for San Antonio, we've been trying to do that. And we, we do hope to come before the city council in January or February next year for a consultant selection to embark on that. But we hope to be a two-year process for a new San Antonio area plan.
And when you're working with applicants, do you inform them that a coordinated area plan is coming?
We do. We let them know that we have interest in this area and what those interests are as best as we have come to understand them at this point. And, and yet, you know, one of the projects that was referenced on San Antonio is a builder's remedy application that the city is processing. So we're, again, we're, we're doing our best to make that, have that awareness, but then also rely on the codes that we have in place today.
Just because it's a builder's remedy doesn't mean they won't be interested in having a congenial cooperative relationship with us. We, I think we should not assume that that's automatically the case.
And I didn't mean to suggest that.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Given what we've learned from NV cap, to Councilmember Burt's point, I can't remember if you actually referenced SOFA, but I was thinking of SOFA when you were talking. You know, we seem to have had one process that is lauded for really being a model and a blueprint 20 years ago. We have NV cap, which is still fresh enough in everybody's memory that we can't necessarily analyze how it went yet quite. And we haven't yet done that work yet, but we need to. What do you think we have learned from our prior coordinated area plan efforts that we will want to deploy for San Antonio Road?
So I think our consultant selection is pretty critical. In a recent project, I wasn't very pleased, I personally wasn't very pleased with the consultant that was selected because they weren't, they came in with an agenda. So what we need to Councilmember Vinker's point is consultants who are really listening. Because if, and also this is to Chair Rosenberg's point, feedback is given, the feedback is not, we don't know where the feedback goes. It's not incorporated into the next version of the report. And that's problematic. So it's feedback, whether it's from, be from a board or commission or from a body of residents, that needs to be taken seriously. And I have been part of a really good process at, in MidPen, where the consultants very clearly said, this is option A, this is option B, this is what we're hearing from the community. Because of what we're hearing from the community, we think option A is better. But here are the downsides to option A. So a much different approach. And so I think we want to, we want to select our consultants based on their track record of listening to communities and finding a solution that works for the community.
May I just have one more minute, Mayor? Thank you, Director Late. When you articulated it'll be a two-year process for the area plan coming before us in January or February, is two years the amount of time it takes to do a proper process? Or two years the amount of time it takes to fit it in alongside the various other items in the work plan of the various bodies that will have to participate in the thing?
Two years is an ambitious schedule to conduct an area plan such as the one on San Antonio. It's, you know, probably two and a half years would be ambitious still. But we have set forth that timeline because we wanted to communicate our urgency and need to advance important policy discussions quickly. And we wanted to get a consultant that could, you know, meet that standard. I will note that, you know, I do think that SOFA and NV cap were two very different projects where there was, you know, land that was available in SOFA that wasn't available in NV cap, for instance, and that had a big, that was a big element to how we could effectively plan for those areas. I will note that the Housing Ad Hoc did have as many of its tasks to, this year, to look at the coordinated area plan process. And we've had some conversations about it. But I still, you know, I think there is some value in going back and taking a look at what was successful and what wasn't in some of these different initiatives. And we have two, we have two area plans that are underway now, or at least one that's underway with the downtown housing plan and another one with the San Antonio area plan. And we are calling these area plans intentionally because they will deviate a little bit from the coordinated area plan process that is, is very scripted in the code and perhaps limiting in how we can be nimble and move these things forward. So that's part of an outcrop of the conversations that we've had with the Housing Ad Hoc is, how can we be more flexible and more nimble? Well, if we don't call it a coordinated area plan and we, and we rely on state law as a, as a area plan concept, that gives us that flexibility to respond to the community and hopefully move the policies forward.
Thank, thank you both.
Councilmember Burt?
I just wanted to follow on one context for when we talk about SOFA. It has subsequently been lauded by, for its outcomes. But at the, during that process and at the completion of it, it was highly criticized for the amount of time and amount of money it took. And the council at that time said, we don't want to do any more of these because this took too long and, and cost too much. And the press said the same thing. And it was about eight years before everybody came around and said, that was the best thing we ever did. And so I don't want to give a misconception that that process was efficient. It was not. And that's what we, part of what we need to look at and reflect on. And, and, and certainly it, it had differences. But there are also, I think, from the two examples that we have over an extensive period of time, that one and the NV cap, we can sit down and learn things. And I think we need to do it before we start this San Antonio plan process.
Councilmember Ku?
I just want to add that in addition to the plan itself, I think with the SOFA plan, they included a park, which is not just a small little pocket park. It's actually quite large and accommodates the development. And so as moving forward, when these coordinated plan comes up, there should be inclusive of what that area is going to be needing. Parks and playgrounds and so forth. So I hope that's also incorporated into that. Furthermore, when we're talking about consultants, I really believe that in certain areas, when they're not constrained by top-down kind of mandates, unfunded ones, that we really need to ensure that these consultants, especially for the retail part, economic development, they need to have an idea of what local conditions are, not just, not just what people are saying, but also what local conditions are. Thank you.
And appreciate the update and all the, all the work. An incredibly busy time, I know, for the, for the PTC and staff on this. Completely agree with the frustration around the use of consultants in the, in the community and oftentimes the feeling that they have their thumb on the scale. We see it here at the dais, I know PTC does and others as well. I think we could do a better job developing policy around that to be able to, to be able to put some, some kind of guardrails on how consultants do the work that they, that they do, especially with how much we pay them, we should be getting the product that we want and be dictated by them. And then glad the, the focus and understand, I think, the frustration from the PTC, and I think we all share it, the delay on these, on these area plans. And we hear you about the need to accelerate that. I feel that strongly as, as well. And so I just, I guess my ask for, for staff is to just be very clear with council. I don't know if that's, if this request will come in through the mid-year budget cycle or when about what are the, what are the needs from staff to be able to accelerate that timeline? I know the two years is ambitious, but what would we need to give you in order to be able to achieve that goal? I don't know, I don't expect an answer right now, but just kind of.
I can give you one.
Great.
Unilateral decision making. Because it really is the public process that is, is that time to develop plans and pull things together. I mean, I could not imagine us being able to do this sooner than two years. But I'll give it some more thought and think about it.
Okay, yeah, unilateral decision making, don't know about that. But, yeah, because I mean, the, the community process is going to be so critical in this. And I appreciate Councilmember Burt providing that context of the, of the SOFA plan. But as far as resources and suggestions on how to be able to streamline that process, I think that would be beneficial when the time comes. Okay, do we have any motions? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I happily recommend that we accept the work plan for PTC.
Second?
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Ku?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames? Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent, thank you. All right, before we move on to our next action item, I think this is a good time for our break. So let's take that 15-minute break now and we'll, we'll come back. We're going to take up now item 14, Adoption of City Council Positions on State and Local Measures Presented to Palo Alto Voters on the November 5th, 2024 ballot. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having us. I am Christine Pryor, Deputy City Clerk in the Clerk's Office. I am joined by Mahelani Ayun, City Clerk, Chantel Cotton Gaines, Deputy City Manager, and virtually by Carly Shelby, Senior Associate at Townsend Public Affairs. Carly had planned to join us in person tonight for this update. And unfortunately, due to a last-minute personal matter, was unable to be here in person, but she's with us on Zoom. So tonight we are discussing the ballot measures on the 2024 ballot that will be before Palo Alto voters and possible positions that the City Council may choose to take. Next slide, please. So on timing, this item is coming to you during the timeframe in which voters are receiving and completing their ballots. We had, in, in working within this timeframe, we considered the city council bandwidth on other city council meetings and the prioritization of, of different items and the scheduling availability of our folks at Townsend. And it turned out that October 21st was the date that worked and met all those criteria. So that's why we're here tonight. The City Council considered similar items in 2020 and 2022. The purpose of this item is mainly informational. The City Council previously has expressed interest in just providing additional information to Palo Altons for them to consider while they are casting their votes. And it off, also offers an opportunity for the City Council to, to discuss the items on the ballot. In, in creating the recommended positions, staff looked at the City Council adopted legislative guidelines. You'll recall that these guidelines are updated every year in late winter by the committee and then by the full City Council in January. Next slide, please. So I'll briefly go over the items on the ballot and the recommended positions, if any. And then I will turn it over to Ms. Shelby for some more background and detail on the different items. If you would like to follow along, the, the table and packet pages, 348 to 351 include more detail about each item and the recommended position. Just to note, the recommended positions were only offered on items that had clearly corresponding legislative guidelines. If there were not guidelines, we did not offer a recommended position and we will leave it to the council if you decide to, to choose a position. So this year, there is one local measure. It is Measure D, the Corey Road Connection Project. Staff recommends supporting this measure. It aligns with the legislative guideline that supports expansion and/or ma- maintaining of public transit options throughout Palo Alto, especially funding for transit. Next slide, please. These are the 10 statewide ballot measures. And rather than read them all out, I will wait for Ms. Shelby's presentation. She's going to go into more detail on, on each item. But staff is recommending support positions on Proposition 3, Marriage Equality, Proposition 4, The Climate Bond, and Proposition 5, The Housing Finance Voter Approval. And I will quickly go over the applicable guidelines for each of those propositions. So Proposition 3 aligns with our guideline that supports policies that promote equity. Proposition 4 aligns with two guidelines. The first promotes the use of renewable resources, water conservation, and the flexible use of existing resources. And the second supports the protection of our natural environment, including open space, trees and tree canopy, and biodiversity. And finally, Proposition 5 aligns with our guideline that supports the lowering or maintaining of voter thresholds for local measures. And now I will turn it over to Ms. Shelby for some more detail on each of these items. Next slide, please.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Carly Shelby, Townsend Public Affairs. Really found that I'm not there in person with you all. Unfortunately, I'm sick, so I'm sparing you all from my, my germs this evening. But getting into a high-level overview of the 10 measures that we have on the ballot. Just for some additional context, this ballot was a lot larger at the beginning of the year in terms of the total measures that would have been considered by voters. There were a number of legislative and political tactics that are typically employed throughout the year to get legislative proposals. And then obviously, we had the Taxpayer Protection Act pulled off of the ballot in response to the California Supreme Court ruling. So getting into the ballot initiatives. Proposition 3 deals with same-sex marriage language. It removes unenforceable language from the Constitution that states marriages between a man and a woman. This measure originated from the legislature by a proposal from Assemblymember Evan Lo and Senator Weiner. It is supported by the Democratic Party, various Democratic legislators, the ACLU. It has opposition from some religiously affiliated groups. Proposition 6 is another measure that originated from the legislature. This actually was part of the Legislative Black Caucus's book package this year. It amends the California Constitution to prohibit the state from punishing inmates with involuntary work assignments and from disciplining those who refuse to work. Instead, state prisoners could set up a volunteer work assignment program to take time off of their sentences in the form of credits. Legislators actually considered a similar measure in 2022. However, the support kind of tanked after the California Department of Finance estimated that it would cost about $1.5 billion annually. This year's measure includes an amendment that has a voluntary work program as a way to get around that issue. Supporters of this measure include the ACLU, the Anti-Racism Coalition, and the Democratic Party. Opponents include the Howard, Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association and the Republican Party. Proposition 32 would raise the minimum wage from, to $17 for the remainder of 2024, if passed off of the November ballot. And then $18 an hour starting in January 2025, which is a bump from the current $16 minimum wage threshold that we currently have on a statewide level. Obviously, local governments have the ability to increase that based off of local ordinances. This is on a statewide basis. There is a small business exclusion for those small businesses with 25 or fewer employees. They would be required to start paying at least $17 next year and then phase in that $18 come 2026. This is a citizen-led initiative that proponents initially tried to qualify for the 2022 ballot, And supporters of this measure include labor groups, and opponents include some business groups. And the next slide, please. So moving on to local rent control. Proposition 33 is a measure that we've seen multiple times, once in 2018, once in 2020, both failed. Both are ultimately the same as this one. This would repeal the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act that prevents local governments from controlling rental in single-family homes or homes built after 1995. If it passes, local governments could create whatever measures that they want to limit annual rent increases, and the state would be precluded from intervening. Proponents tried to overturn Costa-Hawkins again with ballot measures in 2018 and 2020. Lawmakers also tried with legislation. Ultimately, when those efforts failed, Governor Newsom signed along 2019, limiting annual rent increases at a statewide level to 5% plus inflation. This measure has an interesting support in opposition splits. The measure is backed by the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. It's supported by some tenant groups and the Democratic Party. The measure is opposed by Governor Newsom, Raul Verwix, California EMV, California Association of Realtors, and a number of pro-housing and labor groups who argue that the measure would upend existing state protections. And they argue could incentivize local governments to set rent control caps so low that it stalls housing development. So this is an interesting one this year. Proposition 34 would establish a new category of entities called the Prescription Drug Price Manipulators. If an entity is classified as such, they would have to meet specific annual requirements to maintain their tax exempt status and licensure. This measure is narrowly applicable to the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. It was put forward in an attempt to divert their focus and political capital by creating a measure that only applies to them so that they would have to focus on this measure and maybe not so much Prop 33, which they also have a major funding campaign taken. Supporters of this measure include the California Apartment Association, which is anti-Prop 33, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, and then the opponents, obviously, include the AIDS Healthcare Foundation and Consumer Watchdog. Next slide, please. Proposition 36, I'm sure you guys have all heard about this. This is a major measure to reform Proposition 47. It is polling in the 71%, which is pretty impressive because I know that there have been many attempts to reform properties of Fentanyl, which have failed. So this really seems like the first attempt that is really viable. This measure, among its many provisions, increases penalties for certain drug theft crimes by aggregating theft dollar amounts for the purposes of achieving a felony theft conviction. It also includes a written admonishment for Fentanyl-related crimes for the purpose of establishing implied malice in subsequent cases. And it also adds sentencing based on total value of goods stolen. So there's high dollar amounts. It kind of upticks from the $50,000 to $100,000 more sentencing time associated with those crimes. In addition, the measure also establishes what they call a treatment-mandated felony program with the purposes of creating essentially a diversion program. So if you are homeless, you have substance use disorder, you are charged with a number of drug or death crimes, but you have a co-occurring disorder, the measure states that you would be placed into a diversion program instead of serving prison time. I will note that this measure notably lacks a lot of clarity about how this will be funded. As somebody that works closely with members of the Legislature and budget staff on how some of these programs would be funded and how they interact with existing programs that we have in place, like the Care Court, we do envision that this will likely require cleanup legislation next year, if it passes, to be properly implemented. The governor and progressive Democrats attempted to have this measure pulled off of the ballot numerous times, citing concerns about prison population increases. And they even passed a package of bills that accomplish most all of the provisions contained within this measure. However, proponents of Prop 36 argue that the statutory reforms included within the Legislature's package will not suffice in a court of law, and it does require constitutional reforms to be legally viable. So the aggregated theft that was included in some of the measures that we supported this year, they say that it wouldn't be viable and that it requires this constitutional reform. This measure is supported by numerous local governments, local law enforcement groups, and it is opposed by the legislative leaders, pro temp, Assembly Speaker, Governor, and the Democratic Party. Next slide, please. Proposition 2 and 4, both bonds, both originated from the Legislature. Prop 2 would provide $10 billion to K through 12 schools and community colleges for facility renovations. I will note that California lacks a sustainable funding source to fund repairs for schools and relies heavily on the passage of bonds. And the last bond that we passed has been completely exhausted. The impacts of this bond go beyond just school repairs. If it does pass and these funds are available, it will likely lessen the need for high school development impact fees, which is why the California Building Industry Association and other housing groups are behind this because they view this as also helping to spur housing development. And then Prop 4, this is the climate bond. It would authorize $10 billion in bonds to fund environmental and climate-related projects. The climate umbrella is pretty broad here. We have water projects, we have parks, we have forest resiliency, wildfire mitigation, we have sea level rise mitigation. Notably, there are quite a few funding pots for local governments, specifically ones that the City of Palo Alto may be eligible for. If approved, these funds could be available as soon as the next budget cycle. And this did originate by a legislative proposal. Supporters of this include the California Professional Firefighters, labor groups, Democratic Party. Opposition includes some Republican lawmakers and the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. And next slide, please. Proposition 5. This measure, I'm sure we're all familiar, originated from the Legislature in the form of Assembly Constitutional Amendment 1, from Assemblymember Edgar Curry. This measure lowers the voter threshold for the passage of local bond measures from a 2/3 voter threshold to 55% vote threshold, which is the same threshold already enjoyed by local school districts. The measure originally included special taxes, and that was ultimately strict in a play to make this measure more viable to voters in order to have it be applicable to Regional Measure 4, because it is applicable to measures that are on the same ballot. So if Regional Measure 4, which was the $20 billion housing bond for the Bay Area, was on the same ballot and this passed, and that also passed by a majority margin of 55%, then it would apply to that. Ultimately, obviously, Regional Measure 4 did not move forward. This is still on the ballot. Supporters include the Democratic Party, the State Building and Construction Trades Council, Cal EMV. Other housing groups and opponents include the Chamber of Commerce and the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. Proposition 35 is another tax-related provision. This weakens permanent the existing tax on managed healthcare insurance plans, which, if approved by the federal government, provides revenues to pay for Medicare health care services. This measure is ultimately sponsored by the California Medical Association. Their goal is to provide more flexibility in the state's budget and balancing the state and federal matching funds that flow into these programs. It is opposed by Governor Newsom, who alleges that the measure would have a different impact on state budget flexibility. And then next slide, please. I will turn it back over to Christine.
Thank you. This brings us to our recommendation. It is for the Council to review and discuss the ballot measures and consider adoption of formal positions as relevant to the City of Palo Alto or desired by the City Council. And with that, we are available for any questions.
And if I can, good evening, Chantel Cotton Gaines. I just want to thank the Clerk's Office, and particularly Ms. Pryor, for taking the lead on this. This is our working together with the Clerk's Office on all legislative affairs, and this is her first full presentation to the full City Council. And so thank you all for encouraging our staff as a learning organization.
Great. Well done, Ms. Pryor. Thank you for the presentation. And Michelle B., thanks for being here despite being sick. Hope you feel better. Let's go to public comment on this.
No hands are raised in there, no request to speak.
All right, they'll return to the dais. Councilmember Ku.
I just want to ask, if we're looking at Measure D, would it be possible to get the diagram of the proposed road? Then this way, we can look at it as we're discussing it, and also the members of the public can look at it as well. Thank you.
Yes, we'll try to pull that up.
I can also ask Michelle B. a question, if that's all right, Mayor. So Michelle B., for Proposition 2 and 4, where is the money? Is this from the state budget that they're going to be using?
Great question, Councilmember Ku. So the bond would, I mean, we're essentially buying, purchasing, and selling bonds. The bond itself, in both of these contexts, would comprise less than 1/2 of 1% of the state's budget. The state would have to pay interest on the money it borrows. The total cost of the bond would be about 10% more after adjusting for inflation than if the state paid upfront for taxes. So we're looking at a few hundreds of millions of dollars in terms of the carrying cost for those bonds over a 35-year period.
I think Karen's going to ask you, how many years will it take? But and with the state in the deficit, do we see the money available? I mean, the deficit is also going to be going for, not just this fiscal year, it's going to go for a number of years, right?
That's a great question, too. You know, I will say that our revenue certainty right now will become more clear in November when we have some of those preliminary tax receipts on hand. However, it only really becomes really clear in April when we have that final tax receipt push before the May revise. So while we are anticipating another budget deficit, we don't know how extreme or how minimal it will be. However, I will say that, you know, we have not bonded to this extent in some time, and its draw in terms of its impact on the state's general fund will be pretty minimal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. I just wanted to generally say that I support the staff-recommended positions on this. I think that the ones where they've chosen to recommend positions are the ones that do align with our goals. I don't feel the need to go beyond that as a body here. And I generally support, I agree with the positions recommended. I'm happy to go into detail about any of those if the Council gets into it on any particular one, but I just wanted to generally state that position. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yeah. So I agree with the recommendations on the propositions that are already consistent with our legislative guidelines. But that doesn't preclude us from looking at positions on propositions that aren't already kind of framed by our legislative guidelines. And so there are several of them that I'm interested in. One is, do we know if PAUSD has taken a position on Prop 2, the education bond?
No, but I can see if I can find that information for you.
Pardon me?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I will look to find that information for you.
Okay. And it's, in my mind, a question whether this would be viewed as very beneficial to PAUSD by their leadership, and I would tend to be supportive of what they believe would be beneficial to the schools in our community. So I'm not quite sure where to go on that. On Prop 33, that's a measure that very definitely could impact our community. The problem with the current law, and I guess one of the dilemmas is, which is the case often in propositions, it'll react against a problem with the current law and swing far in the opposite direction. And the voters only have a binary choice. When Costa-Hawkins was put in place, that was 1995, and it locked in saying that you couldn't have rent control for development that was newer than what was built in 1995. Since then, we've had this kind of reasonable discussion where property investors say, if I have rent control and can't recover my anticipated return on investment, then I may not make that investment. But the counterargument has been, well, after you've had X number of years, should those properties be allowed by city government decisions to fall under rent control? Who knows how much rent control? And a question of how many years? But what we now have is almost 30 years since Costa-Hawkins was adopted. So that whole principle of how long the we should allow new properties to be free of rent control is starting to get really antiquated. And I think it's an important question for us as a Council. And on top of that, really, this measure, what it does is it enables local jurisdictions to make decisions. It doesn't determine those decisions. So those are probably the ones that I'm most interested in us taking a position on. Prop 36 definitely would affect local communities as well. And Measure D, I'm not sure, is kind of a no-brainer for the Council since we've already taken a clear position on placing this on the ballot. I'm not sure what, why we'd be reconsidering or have any substantial reconsideration of our position on it. So those are kind of some initial thoughts and where I'd be open to going. I'm not clear on my positions, but those are the ones that I'd be interested in hearing from colleagues on.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think what Councilmember Baker summarized is kind of where I am. Jumping into the sort of alternative to Costa-Hawkins at this point, I think, is kind of a deep dive and not really ready to go there. So I'd be comfortable with exactly her position.
Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, just a little more. I think that for me, while I personally support Proposition 2, the School Bonds Act, or the School Bonds Measure, I would want to defer to PAUSD on taking a position on behalf of the city. So that's just my personal view on that one. Proposition 33 is very complex. All six of the major California newspapers have opposed it. It's an unusual thing because, whereas Costa- have opposed it. It's, it's, it's an unusual thing, because whereas Costa-Hawkins, for these older properties, affects things, we do have this, what, a couple of years ago, the Tenant Protection Act was passed, and there's, so there's existing tenant protection law that limits increases right now to COLA plus 5% to 10%, in Santa Clara County, it's 8.8%. And Attorney General Rob Bonta sent out a reminder just last week, I think it was, to remind districts about the rent control provisions of the Tenant Protection Act. So, it was passed a couple of years ago, and now they just, last year, I believe it was, protect, passed some enforcement provisions. But of course, I'm realizing I'm saying all of this with Carly on the line, and she would be able to know more about it than I. But I think it's, it's quite complex. Some people think that it will keep the rent down, because it's obviously controlling it. Others say that by virtue, as Councilmember Burt mentions, by virtue of doing that, that not only will there be less investment in building more, but that landlords might neglect current tenants, because they're likely to stay, because the rent is so low, and/or that people whose families decrease in size would stay in oversized housing, because the rent is cheap when that could be freed up for others. So, it's a complex issue, I think, with a lot of facets. It's hard to deal with as part of a multi-item, agendized item. So, I guess I maintain my preference to stay out of it as a council, although I completely agree that it would have impact on our city.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm sort of in a hybrid position, because I appreciate the propositions put forth by staff. They seem like the right ones for us to align with. I also like the notion that we might delve further, but I agree with Councilmember Lowing, Vice Mayor, I should say, on the complexity, for example, of Costa-Hawkins. Looking at where we are in the calendar, where we are in the evening, I don't feel that I'm ready for a thorough, rigorous conversation about this really important topic. So, I like the notion that in the future, we might grapple with ballot measures a little sooner, with more time on the calendar. And, but I don't see that as being the right use of our time tonight, just presuming we're going to have a lot of different opinions on this, and there's a lot to say, and there's probably a lot of additional research we might want to bring forward that we don't necessarily have at our fingertips. If I may, I've just corresponded with the school board president, she's not president right now, with a school board member who says the school board does not take any positions officially. So, while a number of them are in favor of Prop 2 personally, our, our school board colleagues have not taken a position on that, and I just wanted to report out on that.
Councilmember Koo?
Thank you. And I, I too appreciate staff's recommendations for the ones to take positions on. However, I would, I will not support Proposition 5 here. On all the rest, I am aligned with those, but not Proposition 5. And I'll basically say, you know, Proposition 5 is another, is another method of taxing, and a lot of times, these are, these are burdens that are going to be imposed on property owners, many of them who are going to be on limited income, and there's a potential for them to not be able to pay their property tax if it increases. As it is, here in Palo Alto, we already have the PAUSD school bonds for property that is at 3 million. It's the estimated addition to the property tax, as a special assessment, is 2,562. There's the PAUSD parcel tax, which is about $869, or maybe even $870 per year. And I believe on that one, there's an escalation every year. Then, of course, there's the city's library bond of 243. But also, the city is also seeking approval for new and additional tax measures. Potentially, there's going to be needed investments in affordable housing and railroad crossing, grade separations. There are, there's also coverly, which is going to be coming up potentially with a purchase price of 65.5 million, and an estimated 350,000, I'm sorry, 350 million or so for the construction. And so, I look at this, and it just keeps on growing in terms of what property owners are having to pay. Potentially, the amount on their property tax bill could increase by 5,000 or even $5,500 a year, and that is substantial if all of this is put together. So, I also feel that this is a, instead of building generational wealth, it's actually creating a generational debt for future, for the, for the heirs of the property. In addition, so this is just the city of Palo Alto. Potentially, there could be a mega transportation tax that's coming in 2026. There's the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, which tried to implement a regional measure tax earlier this year, but it was pulled because of their bad math skills. And so, it could come back in 2026 again. And so, I, I do have concerns about how this is not being accountable, and also, if we're going to put forward a tax, it should be at the two-thirds voter threshold, and we should be able to justify why we need that. And if voters do believe that it's something worthwhile, then they will sign on and vote for this bond. But to go 55% as a voter threshold is just being lazy and not really giving voters the respect that they should get in understanding that this money is needed for certain things. So, I think that there is accountability and reason for keeping it at 2/2, which is 66.67%, especially for such impactful dollars that people are going to have to carry and be burdened with. Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, so I'll just follow on with Prop 5. I also don't support it. I, I think people are burned enough, 2/3 sounds good to me. Prop 32, minimum wage, I'm a no on that. I, you know, minimum wage basically causes unemployment, so it's not a good thing. Then Prop 33, I'm a no on that, doesn't make sense to me. And then, on Prop 36, I'm a yes on that. I think we should, we should do that. Anyone that's been to San Francisco, absolutely would vote yes on 36. That's it for me. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the, of the staff recommendation. We have our policy guidelines. I don't really see why we would go beyond that this evening. The propositions, one, I appreciate the report from Townsend was really helpful. I'm still, I still, myself, haven't submitted my ballot, mostly because I haven't figured out all the propositions. I know some things I'm voting for, but not necessarily all the propositions. So, I appreciate this has been very helpful, but I'm not prepared to go beyond the staff recommendations. I think those make sense and are aligned with our, our policies. Okay. Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes, I'd like to move that we support the legislative actions as recommended by Townsend.
Second.
And to, do you, do you mean to include support for Measure D? Because I believe that's a staff recommendation and not a recommendation from Townsend.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, I was taking into consideration Councilmember Burt's note that, noted that we sort of already approved that, but if we need that as well, I will certainly include that.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes.
So, just for the record, just so everyone knows which ones those are, that would be support for Proposition 3, support for Proposition 4, support for Proposition 5, and support for Measure D. Correct? Okay, thank you.
That's right.
Councilmember Koo? Oh, sorry. Do you want to, do you need to speak to your motion?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Speak to the second.
I think I, I think it's important that we do our best right now to proppine on what we think is best for the city of Palo Alto. There is so much that is political about these others, that I think we've, you know, there's a lot that's been said tonight that I would like to share an opinion on, but I'm not going to. And I think it's just behooves us to focus in on, you know, what does the city of Palo Alto need for us to do right now? That's why I support this motion.
Thank you. And Councilmember Koo?
Yes, I'd like to see, I'd like to ask the maker in a second, or if they're willing to separate Proposition 5.
I think that's my decision.
Oh, sorry, yes, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll separate Prop 5.
Thank you.
No problem. I see no further lights. When the clerk is ready, call the vote.
Taking the vote on the first main motion, which supports Measure D, Proposition 3, and Proposition 4. Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Taking the vote to adopt a position on Proposition 5. Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
No.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 2.
Great. Thank you again to staff, Ms. Pryor, Michelle B. All right, we are right on time. Look at us. Moving to our last action item, Item 15, Colleagues Memo, Restoration of Subjective Aesthetic Standards to Palo Alto's Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance. I will turn it over to the, to the authors of the colleagues' memo. So, Councilmember Koo, would you like to, would you like to kick us off?
Certainly. With the court order that had taken place in 2020 at the Ninth Circuit Court, the City of Portland versus the United States, they gave jurisdictions the ability to return to, to subjective standards. And, and I just believe that, you know, we should just be looking at that and putting it on the agenda for further discussion, but more that we should be reviewing the designs because, and also placement. They are getting bulkier the way that I see them, but we should clearly have public meetings so that we are understanding where they're going, and going back to have some design elements behind it, especially because the Ninth Circuit Court has already decided, has made the ruling, and we should, we should reverse what we have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lowing would like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you. Just as kind of an executive summary of the, the colleagues memo that you have in front of you, obviously, in September of 18, FCC issued a ruling to move away from objective standards for small cell wireless. I was Chair of the PTC at that point in time, and that night, many of us argued that since this edict was already being legally opposed by many other cities, we should just take no action until the court made a ruling. PTC was overruled by staff that night, and in 19, council voted to go ahead with it. But at the PTC meeting, they also said we could quite easily revert back to the current norm and process if the FCC action was not sustained by the court. Well, clearly, it was not sustained by the court, because they vacated it in 2020, and the data is here in the, in the staff report that it was arbitrary, not defined, and it was, its purpose was not explained. So, in my view, we should have reverted seamlessly right after the 2020 verdict to our thoughtful list of subjective standards prepared by multiple city departments and managed with transparency, and in public meetings by the ARB. The key here, from, from my point of view, the crux of the matter is that we need to understand and acknowledge that these so-called objective standards are really not objective. And these small cell towers really need site-specific review in some cases, so we can't take the approach of one-size-fits-all on all of these antennas. So, even today, with the FCC standards being applied by the planning director, applicants can request and obtain exceptions based on their own claims of necessity, and sometimes that necessity, for their standpoint, for the applicants, Verizon, et cetera, is based on they want to lower their costs of creating the setting. So, in other words, the subjective changes are already being made right now by the planning director instead of the ARB as it was before. And I just want to jump in here and say, this has nothing to do with any given planning director now or in the future. It has nothing to do with that. It just has to do with the process. So, ARB would need to spend more time on these applications, no question, because they're spending none on it right now. But I think that's a good thing, because their expertise is being bypassed with the current process, and the best outcome for citizens is a process of ARB making these judgment calls based on their training and their expertise for various areas in the city, and in a public hearing with transparency. That's the basis of the suggestion that we revert.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both for bringing this colleagues' memo forward. Was there any, anything from staff before we go to the public?
At this time, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Staff provided their response for resource in the report, but we're here for questions.
Great. Thank you. Then we'll turn to public comment.
Our first speaker is Jeanne F. Good evening, members of city council. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jeanne Fleming, and I'm here on behalf of United Neighbors of Palo Alto. Realizing that this is the last item on your agenda tonight, we decided to have me speak for the group, rather than have you listen to a stream of us make the same basic point. That point is that the issues raised by Councilmember Koo and Lowing's colleagues' memo are a great concern to the residents of Palo Alto, excuse me, allergies, and they deserve to be thoughtfully debated by you and your colleagues at a future city council meeting. So, please understand that while I am only one representative of United Neighbors, asking you tonight to vote to agendize that memo for full consideration by council, I am speaking for many. I am speaking for, among others, Sam Brain, Tina Chow, Ron Chun, Ruth Ellen Dickinson, Jerry Phan, Annette Fizino, Darshana Greenfield, Wolfgang Himmelbauer, Alex Ivachenko, Amruta Katamori, Charlene Lau, Gwen Luce, Michael Morier, John Melnichuk, Ann Proter, Leo Pavolotsky, Mary Robel, and David Schwab. These are the names of just a few of the dozens of residents that I know have written to you, asking you to agendize Councilmember Koo and Lowing's colleagues' memo. To be clear, what we are not asking you to do is to commit yourself regarding any of the issues that the Koo-Lowing memo raises. We ask only that you vote in favor of advancing the memo as it stands, in order to allow the issues it raises to receive your full consideration at a future date. Thank you, and if you have any questions, Thank you. And if you have any questions, I would be very happy to try to answer them.
Our next speaker is Peter B.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I'm Peter Baltay, currently a member of the Architecture Review Board. I urge the council to take up this item. I've been on the review board for almost 10 years now and was actively involved in creating these objective standards. Unfortunately, I feel that staff has not interpreted and enforced our standards the way we intended. And I believe it just needs a little more work to, to properly represent what the citizens of Palo Alto would like. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryna C.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
So hi again, everybody. I decided to go home unlike you guys. You're, you're, you're kept in there in chambers. I'll try and keep it short. I'm Bryna Chang, Chair of the Planning Transportation Commission, speaking as an individual. I urge you to advance the recommendations in the colleagues' memo written by Councilmember Koo and Vice Mayor Lowing that restores subjective aesthetic standards for cell towers. As Vice Mayor Lowing summarized, Palo Alto only adopted these standards, these objective standards, because it was forced to do so by a change in FCC rules in 2018. And however, those rules were subsequently overturned by the courts in 2019. So it's now five years later and it's high time we undid what was already deemed by the courts to be misguided FCC rulemaking. We all want excellent cellphone service, but there's a happy medium where we can preserve resident health and safety and attractive aesthetics while also having great cell service. Right now, the pendulum has swung too far in favor of the telecom companies. And we, as a city, should not be bending over backwards to accommodate the telecom companies at the expense of our residents, especially when so many other surrounding jurisdictions do a better job standing up for their citizens. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on Action Item 15.
Excellent. Thank you to our public commenters. And Councilmember?
Yes. Well, thanks for bringing this forward. I think this is a real positive development that we can look at reverting to subjective standards. My only question is, I'm not clear on what process is being proposed tonight. Are we being, is it being proposed that tonight we would adopt the changes? Or that we would be referring this to, PTC and/or ARB?
The specific proposal is that we just agendize it, that this has been introduced according to protocols and that we agendize it to debate at a later meeting this year.
Of the council?
Of the council, correct.
Okay. So that's not clear. You've got a recommendation here. It says the recommendation is to flat out appeal. It is not to agendize or anything like that. So that's, so your recommendation would be to not go back to PTC or ARB?
Right. Not certainly not this stage. The idea is just to, instead of debate it tonight, schedule a meeting to debate it. That would be the recommendation, but of course it could take amendments or whatever. So.
Okay. I'll just note, it's not the way this is written.
That's fine.
Okay.
Councilmember Winker.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, when we talk about going back to the subjective standards, what ones, were they ones already on the books or were they ones that had been developed and were proposed?
What was the second half of your question?
Well, I, I, I read in the colleagues' memo about all the input from the different bodies and developing the subjective standards. Had they been adopted and were they on the books, the subjective standards?
Yes, and that's what was taken off, right.
Is that right, Steph? So the subjective, the, the, the subjective standards were on the books? And then we moved to the objective standards after the 2018 decision or were they just in development and?
So we had standards in the code that guided our review.
Okay.
Those were struck and replaced with objective standards.
Okay, thank you. So the ones that were in the code, when had they been developed? Well, let's let the Director late and then if the, if the mayor says. Director late.
I, I don't recall.
Okay. Do you want, sure, sure. I would be happy to ask Ms. Fleming if you know the answer to the timing of the development. You should come back to the podium, though.
Subjective standards refer to the process by which any development in the city of Palo Alto was to be considered. So these, these standards were, for example, contextual. And the movement to the so-called objective standards was to, to try to put in concrete standards that could be used over and over again.
I understand what objective standards are. Thank you. And I understand, understand why they got in there. I was trying to understand about the subjective standards, how they came to be, when and by whom.
The subjective standards were simply part of this, this city ordinance with respect to any type of development, cell towers included.
Got it. Okay. So, so thank you. The, the reason I'm asking is that, what I'm trying to understand is when we talk about, and this isn't necessarily for you, this is from like just colleagues. When I talk about, we talk about seamlessly going back to the subjective standards. These were ones that were developed probably, you know, over time and up until 2017 because they were, we went back to objective standards in 2018. So technology has changed a lot since then. The Gs have gone up to 5G. Stuff has changed. So I just wanted to note that because if we go back to subjective standards of some sort, I'm not sure we want to go back to 2017. That's my point. So I don't know if people have thoughts on that, Vice Mayor?
I think that's exactly what we should do at the next meeting. Is have that, is have that kind of discussion?
If, if. Well, I want to, okay. That, so you don't want to talk about that at all now?
But I don't think we should because it hasn't been agendized, but.
So, so let's go back to the process questions that Councilmember Burt was asking. So what you were, are saying is that we would talk about that and options such as if we were to go back to subjective standards, what ones, when they would be developed, when they came to us, all of that would be open for discussion?
That, that would be my understanding, yeah.
Okay. And so then this is for staff. Were there, are there? Have there been any efforts? I, I'd heard somewhere there might have been efforts ongoing to develop subjective standards and then because the, because of the Ninth Circuit decision. So has there been any work done on that prior to tonight?
No, not, I'm not aware of us looking to establish subjective standards since the, the court ruling.
Okay. I had heard that from another staff member and so I wanted to inquire because I found that kind of curious as well.
What we, so I don't know what that reference was, but what I will say is that we were taking a, a look at our objective standards and trying to come up with a set of criteria that would guide our decision-making. And we would, we were contemplating a point-based system that would allow us to promote certain types of facilities depending on where they were located in the city and whether they met certain criterias and assigning, you know, higher or lower points in the, in the negative if it were, say, in proximity to a school or in proximity to residential properties. I wouldn't call that a set of new subjective criteria, but more of a set of, of guidance that would inform the decision-making.
Prioritization, yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Maybe that was the confusion. So, thank you. So I want to understand more about this shot clock thing. Because I understand that the parties could negotiate to extend it. But I'm also kind of wondering, I, I, I believe the case is that if the city hasn't made a decision, the application is deemed approved. So why would a party applicant, you know, agree to not be deemed approved and extend that? In your experience, does that happen?
So I'll let the legal staff respond to the specifics as to, you know, what happens when that gets termed out. But I, I will say this, it, it is possible and we do engage with applicants to toll agreements from time to time when there's a mutual benefit to do so. I, I don't know, I, I don't know that staff shares the same perspective in the, in the memo that it is as easy to accomplish for these particular types of facilities. Because we really don't have that leverage. The same leverage we might have in another type of development application where we're trying to reach some kind of an agreement on that. So I, and we have to proceed with processing the application based on the timelines that are codified or established. And if we do get a tolling agreement, we're not going to get it at the beginning. It might happen if, if it happens toward the end, but by that time we would have got, had to have gone through all of the work, scheduled the hearing before the Architecture Review Board and likely scheduled the hearing before the City Council before we would probably receive that agreement. But let me turn it over to the attorneys to see if they want to amplify that.
Yes, so I agree with everything Mr. Late said. In, in general, what we find is that it, it really does depend on the applicant and how it is they wish to proceed. In terms of just the general legal landscape, however, shot, shot clock timelines have gotten shorter and the remedies for violating the shot clock have gotten stronger. Essentially, there is now a deemed approved remedy if you do not act on an application within the specified time period. We neglected to mention at the top of the item that we do have our outside counsel on the line. Ms. Gail Karish is a partner at the law firm of Best, Best and Krieger and an expert on telecommunications law. In fact, she was among the council of record who represented the local governments in the city of Portland, the FCC case. So if you had some technical questions or specific legal questions, you would like to pose, Ms. Karish is available to respond.
Thank you. That's great that she's here. I don't have any now, but just that Director late, I guess what I'm just curious about is if I'm applying for a permit and it's getting today, I don't know, 70 out of 90 or 50 out of 60 or something. And with these remedies getting stronger, such that my application may just be deemed approved if I've let the clock run out. Why, what would motivate me to do an extension deal?
Yeah. So, you know, that, that's asking me to sort of get in the mind of an applicant and I, I don't know.
Or what you've seen.
Yeah. What I would say is this. You know, I think it depends on the circumstance. I think it, you know, by and large, people generally like to work with the city. They don't like to have, you know, adversarial relationship with, you know, the regulate regulatory authority that is processing their application. But that doesn't mean that they will necessarily agree to a, a tolling agreement. They may utilize the, you know, the sort of stronger position that they have now for wireless applications than they may have been willing to in the past. And so, so I, I don't want to speculate how any one of the wireless carriers who are represented by different individuals based on a particular application may feel about a particular situation. But, you know, yes, we, it is possible for us to enter into an agreement. There's less incentive to do so, I think, today.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, hadn't realized how far I'd run over. I have a follow-up just to that, just for this line of questioning that I'll, I'll hold everything else. Is that all right? Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we do this and have another thing agendized and we adopt a new, new standards and we go through all these processes and hearings, if it's really going to be a distinction without a difference at the end of the day. If somebody doesn't like our subjective standards, are they going to run out the clock and then not agree to extend them? I, I, I hope that's not the case, but I worry that it could well be the case.
So we would process the application such that it doesn't just run out?
So, so they don't control much of that by delay. You, it's, it's really on us?
We would, we would track the timeline and we would know when we're needing to get a, a final decision and, and I, I, I don't know if this is settled yet, but it's my understanding that the time, the tolling agreement includes the appeal period as well. So we wouldn't want to have a, you know, within that shot clock period, it's not enough just to make a, an administrative staff level decision because we have to account for, again, my understanding is that we have to account for the appeal period as well. So if we got to that situation where we were 70 days into a 90-day shot clock, we would be scheduling the item before the City Council because the City Council is the final decision-making authority on an application. And that's what we note in our, um, uh, resource analysis section is that when, if, you know, when we get more of these applications in, each one of these applications, these tier two, tier three applications are likely going to be presented to the City Council for final action and decision.
And that's been about a dozen this past year.
Uh, I, not this past year, but you, you know, they, they, they've, they've come in clusters where there's just a, a large volume of nodes that are being placed throughout the city to build out the network. We've had, I want to say three or four of those large, um, applications. We've seen that drop off a little bit since that initial set, but we have also, you know, I, I can't tell you when we might get the next set of applications coming forward.
Okay, I see. And that explains why. I think it said a couple of years since Verizon, but I thought there were a dozen from AT&amp;T, but maybe I'm wrong. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Lithgow Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by thanking and commending my colleagues, Councilmember Koo and Lowing for doing this deep dive and producing this really rigorous colleagues' memo. My colleagues have gone deep here to advocate for this. We've heard from a number of members of the public who feel strongly about this. And on the other hand, in the report, it is clear that staff is saying that it's going to take a lot of staff time and it's going to bog down the agendas of the ARB and the council and not just the agendas, but the process to get things on the agenda. So I want to keep my question narrowly or questions narrowly on the subject at hand, which is should we agendize this for a full discussion at a subsequent meeting? In order for me to make my mind up on that question, I want to drill into the question Councilmember Winker was getting at, which is how often does this happen? How pertinent is this in the entirety of the city's, you know, annual life? If we were to do this, what volume of work are we inviting upon ourselves? And what will necessarily be displaced to make room for this? So you were just saying, yeah, obviously you can't predict when the next one will come and they come in clusters. But can you ballpark impact? What, what do we, what can we reasonably predict is the number of things that might, the cell phone applica, cell tower applications that, that might come forward? If it's one-off and hardly ever happens, sort of feels like why are we spending all this time on it? If it's a lot, it's clearly going to displace another set of work projects. So I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense as to whether, you know, this is going to have a negative consequence. We, the, the report doesn't contemplate. So I'm, can you give me a guesstimate or?
I do. I can. As Director late said, it is a little bit hard to forecast because they, they do come in batches typically by carrier. But if we're looking at just the last couple of years and only tier two or tier three applications, which would be the ones that are, are proposed to, to move back to ARB review. In 2022, we had eight tier two, uh, applications. In 2023, we had one, and in 2024, we had one.
And so the, thank you for that. Mr. Ariano, can you give me a sense then of this sort of burden? To what extent is this, is this a small burden on staff and ARB council workload? Is it a medium burden? Is it a high burden?
It's a low burden when we don't have an application. And it is a high burden when we do have an application.
It's a high burden when we have an application?
When we have an application with multiple nodes, it is a tremendous. When we have an application with multiple nodes, it is a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
So I'm just trying to reconcile the colleagues memo because we have on the front page a recommendation to simply repeal the objective standards, not a referral to either the, back to the council or to the PTC. And then at the top of the fifth page of the packet, under fiscal and resource impacts, which is usually what's composed by the staff, it, it says we could go to refer this to the PTC, correct? And then alternately, we could do an amendment on a temporary basis. So we have three options before us. We got the one on the front page, two more in the body. And this is really unusual for a colleagues memo. The purpose of submitting it to staff in advance is typically to make sure that the recommendations are following procedures, which this doesn't appear to do because it's written on the front as if we would take action tonight. That would be against our policies, right?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. So in your procedures and protocols, there is a note that the colleagues memo process would provide for action to be taken same night. I'm paraphrasing here, in cases that were very straightforward or ceremonial. This is not that. Also, so if I could comment on a couple of your observations, it may be that the process is evolving a little bit. Staff is working pretty hard these days to be very respectful of colleagues memo authors. And so the staff resource section is indeed the staff section, the staff drafted section. And that was drafted in collaboration with multiple departments. So it takes into account input from planning, from the city manager's office, from the city attorney's office. The colleagues memo itself did appear to us to be drafted. The title of it and the attachment of a document that's in the form of a resolution appeared to suggest immediate action. The title of the item that was noticed to the public does not include adoption of a resolution. And that is because we, as staff, have advised and informed the authors that that would be inappropriate tonight because it doesn't fall under your procedures. Also, while it would be a policy option for the council to give us direction to bring back legislation that meets as much as possible the goals of the drafted resolution, we would not do it exactly like this. There would need to be some minor changes to conform with law. And for example, we believe that an ordinance is actually required under the structure of our code rather than a resolution. So it's not before you for action tonight. It does leave you a lot of options. It could be, as Vice Mayor Lowing has suggested, that you simply refer this for more discussion another time. That could be to council. It could be to one of council's committees. It could be to a board or commission. You could lay aside the whole topic and say you don't wish to proceed tonight. You could give us enough detailed direction that we could actually draft legislation and bring it back for you if you wanted to have that full discussion tonight. So those are your, your options there broad.
That's, that's even more options than what I'd heard before. So we're up to four or five options. And I want to look at the option at the top of page five, which says this process, it says, this, this can be accomplished by directing staff to amend the wireless communications facility ordinance in a manner consistent with the colleagues memo. This process requires an ordinance that would be reviewed by the PTC. But that wouldn't occur if we asked this to return directly to the council, correctly?
So my understanding was there was some interest by some council members to have it returned to council for continued discussion of the policy direction.
Well, we only have, wait a minute, timeout there. We have two authors of the colleagues memo. They're the only ones who have spoken to this. When you say there's some interest by other council members, what are you referring to?
I heard Councilmember Vice Mayor Lowing say that tonight on the dais.
Yeah.
So what, if I could, what the, the language on the top of page five refers to is the standard process mandated by state law for amending the zoning code. So you do need to send an amendment to the zoning code through your planning commission, unless you do it on an urgency or temporary basis, in which case you can do it directly. But it's, it's temporary, can last up to 18 months, two years. And then, then it does need to go to planning and come back to council. So that's just a statement of the, the state law requirements and the standard.
I, I will say that the staff report doesn't clarify that that, that's based on the state law default. And that further creates just more confusion in this whole set of alternatives. Thanks for that clarification, but I really would like to see these things laid out more clearly in the staff responses to colleagues memos. Because what you just described is not in the report by the staff. So, and the referral to PTC, this is my last question on this, rather than ARB, is that clearly because that's what's the default process under state law? Because I wonder whether ARB would be the more appropriate commission to review it. But maybe procedurally, that's not the way it falls.
So it, it does at some point, an amendment to the zoning code does at some point need to go to PTC. If you, if council wishes to send this matter to ARB to receive their expert advice, that's, that would be an additional step and it is at your discretion to do that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just want to clarify that the point was to just be, have a procedural meeting tonight. And that when it came back for full debate, the intent of the two authors was, as it, as it says there, to revert to subjective standards. Circling back to Councilmember Vinker's question and a public comment by someone who's on ARB said, you know, we'd like to take a look at it again and maybe fix some of that because things have changed since 2017, which I think is perfectly acceptable. So at that point, we'd have to figure out if we sent it back there or not. I just didn't, I just not had, I had not, sorry. I had a very long, wonderful wedding all weekend and I can't talk. I had not anticipated getting to the debate level tonight. So just reiterating what the intent was.
Just wait, and I again appreciate the, the authors of the colleagues memo submitting this. I agree, this should have come before council back in 2020 when the Ninth Circuit made this decision. So this is far too delayed, but I'm glad, I hope we're moving in the right direction to be able to return back to subjective standards. It's clear this is a more nuanced discussion that, that I think is going to require some additional insight and feedback from, from staff and a more informed discussion at the, at the dais. So I certainly support moving this forward to a future action item by, by council. I don't know if anybody has a motion or if there's any more discussion, but I don't see any other lights. Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll just, this zeroes in on this question. If we, we bring it back to ourselves without ARB review and then we have that discussion and decide, well, we really should have ARB look at it, then we've lost more time. And so I'm, I'm more inclined to send it right to them, get their input, whatever it is that they think are improvements that they would recommend. They don't make that, we decided, and then get it back to us. Now, but I want to make sure that if it doesn't go to PTC, then it's only on an interim ordinance, correct? So then our second question is, would we want to go to ARB, PTC and back to us? And then it's a permanent ordinance rather than an interim one. And I think those are the options before us. Bring it right back to us, which might be a less good product because we're not really the experts on this so much. Send it to ARB or send it to ARB and PTC and get it back to us. So I think those are the options and I think we need to think through the process and figure out what we want to do to proceed.
Sorry, I was just going to respond that it seems to me that we might all be comfortable or four of seven of us or five of seven of us or whatever, if we thoroughly debate it, decide that it should go to one of those bodies with direction that you should feel free to change the 2017 subjective standards if they can be improved and send it back to us for final approval. And then we can get to it very quickly in the next month or so. And then.
Councilmember Ku?
I, I just wanted to clarify. So thank you. Well, thank you both, Councilmember Burt and Vice Mayor Lowing for going through the process of this. I, I just want to make sure, since this is an ordinance zoning change potentially, then it does need to go to Planning and Transportation Commission for them to vet this out. And then for it to go to ARB, it's mostly to review the designs, correct?
I would assume so, but I believe that was the council member's intention in their comments.
Because I, I can't see ARB reviewing zoning changes and this does involve that. So it's going to be mostly designs?
It would be aesthetics. That's what the ARB would make recommendations on the process for review of the aesthetic standards. I, I thought that's what a board member, Balti, was referring to, but I'm not clear from his comments.
All right. Well, I do, I was under the impression also that we were going to be deciding if we're going to agendize this on a next council meeting. So taking all the comments, I think that we, you know, I think we can move forward with the motion of directing staff to bring back an ordinance to address subjective standards as we had previously.
So is that a question?
Could you, yeah, could you restate that for me? I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
I'm just making the motion in order to move forward to direct staff to agendize this item and to come back with a ordinance addressing subjective standards.
And if I might, and perhaps since we've been talking a lot about process tonight for the benefit of all council and, and the community, when, when you say bring this back on council as an action item, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, you're assuming that staff would bring forward an action item that actually has the drafted ordinance that repeals and reinstates the prior subjective standards for the council then to debate?
For the council to review and to perhaps even provide direction and instructions and a referral to PTC and ARB. It could be, I don't know what council's going to decide at that meeting, but.
Sure. I guess so, just, I'm trying to understand the clarity between the staff work of tonight's and the information that was presented this evening versus what additional information the council would be looking for in this subsequent agendized conversation. So, you know, the only difference that I hear right now is giving the direction to staff to actually draft the formal ordinance to make that change. And otherwise, there's no other change that I'm hearing between the information that's before the council this evening and what a newly agendized item would be.
Repeat the last part of your.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is, is that the, what, if I'm hearing your motion correctly, we would be bringing back this colleagues memo simply with a, an actual ordinance doing the repealing. But otherwise, no other information. That's the only difference. I, I'm not hearing what the difference is that we would be agendizing as staff.
The ordinance amendment, right, that you mentioned in your staff resource portion?
Right, just the ordinance. That's what I'm saying, is all we would bring back is the formal ordinance repeal. Is that the intention? Sorry, I've heard amending the 2017 standards. I've heard going to commissions. I'm just trying to get some clarity between the steps.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Councilmember Ku to be done.
I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Vinker, then Lithgow Hames, then Burt, and everybody's excited to talk.
Thank you. If I can remember what I was going to talk about. If, if Assistant City Manager, we had the revised ordinance to repeal, it would revert to the 2017 subjective standards. But I, so, so I, so the staff report would be basically putting up a straw man ordinance because if we want to talk about the issues we've raised tonight and public commenters and others have raised about updating even subjective standards, we would need to do so at that meeting and give direction because otherwise we have objective standards and they're 2017. Is that correct? Absent amendment. It was just straight repeal.
Yeah, so I, I will tell you, I, I actually don't recall what the 2017 codes said as I sit here today. So we would need to go back and understand that. But I think when we talk about these subjective standards, one of the key features that we're talking about is it's subject to the architectural review board findings. And those findings haven't changed since 2017. What I don't know is, are there, as I sit here today, and we can, you know, research this, is are there other context-based design, you know, criteria that were related to wireless facilities that got modified and made objective based on how they were written?
That's super helpful because that's what would need to be added to the staff report, right? So, so, so I think Assistant City Manager is asking what we would need between now and then so that you would know like preparation and agendizing and all of that. I think in order to have the debate that Vice Mayor is suggesting about whether we just simply repeal and seamlessly go back to what exists, we need to know what exists. And I appreciate that it might have changed somewhat within the way you just described. So that would be, be very helpful. I, I guess for me, so now that we've clarified, this would need to go through PTC and ARB to have any update, which I'm getting a sense from my colleagues that we all want to make sure it applies well to current day 5G. I mean, we'll talk about that later, but I, I'm getting that sense that we'll at least be talking about that. And we would need to go through those commissions. I do think they're going to need direction from us. And how you can help us think about those issues and direction would be very helpful. And I think also we, to make it most efficient so that whatever comes back out of the process and back to council is most likely to get through council, we'd also want to anticipate what stakeholders might say, like the wireless companies that provoked the FCC rule in the first place. I mean, the reason that rule happened that got overturned by the Ninth Circuit is they were concerned about the, what they had to deal with. That, I'll just note for my non-lawyer friends, my lawyers, my colleagues in the law here will know this, but words, the words arbitrary and capricious weren't just ones the Ninth Circuit chose. That is the standard they had to meet. So they're, they're going to, and that's, that's a fairly high burden. So there's a lot of stuff you can do shy of that. And I think that we're going to want to be able to give some more direction if we do agree to refer this on to the PTC and ARB for adoption of new subjective standards. And any help you can. refer this on to the PTC and ARB for adoption of new subjective standards and any help you can give us. Next time would be helpful. So I have the moment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lethcon Hames.
Thank you, Mayor. I worry, I'm looking at the staff report on page two. There's a sentence on item three, which begins currently because of the narrow scope of objective aesthetic review. Issues with the site of proposed cell tower not even eligible to be considered. This is the sentence I care about. Having a robust and demanding discretionary application review process, dot, 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 will achieve these aims. I feel like that's a step back for this city, a city where too much process and passion for one off decision making can be our Achilles heel. So my concern is staff is saying even one of these would be very burdensome. And in this, in this report before us today, we don't even know the scope of the problem. How many people are impacted by this? How many towers do we have? How many people are upset? I can't tell if this is a tempest in a teacup. And so if it does come back to us, that's what I'm looking for is is this. We have some music playing in the chamber right now, and I confess due to my ADHD, I can't concentrate as it plays as I talk. Okay, it's stopped. I felt like we should all get up and march. It felt very patriotic. Okay. Sorry. So what I'm trying to say, Director Lay is gone, he said, I'm tired of this. Thank you for trying to turn that off. That's my question. Whether it goes to the PTC, to the ARB or to us next. We have to ask ourselves, is this a priority that has made its way to the top above everything else we're trying to fit into our work plans? And I don't feel that we have that information yet. So I'm in no way prepared to make a decision tonight on the merits. And I am worried that we are jettisoning something that staff is calling incredibly burdensome to the top of the heap when there are so many other things that we might want to have conversations about, you know, being in that position. So I am inclined to vote against moving this forward.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, I don't think we have necessarily the choice of not moving this forward versus predetermining what our process or outcome will be. So I'd support moving forward on this and agendizing this before the council, but not merely with the but the language for the repeal, but the a better analysis of the alternative approaches and the implications that would reside with each of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So a couple of comments that I think Councilmember Burt's follow on Councilmember Burt's suggestion here. So two pieces of information that probably we ought to have made clear. The first is that question of what were these previous subjective standards? Those are simply the findings under the architectural review process. They are not specific to wireless. They are, as the member of the public pointed out, simply the findings and review that the Architectural Review Board makes and undertakes in any planning project. So so in terms of reverting back to the pre 2018 standards, that's what those would be. The other point of information is that in preparing for this item, staff did not undertake a rigorous review of the suggestions and provisions contained in the resolution. So we cannot therefore simply repackage the resolution in ordinance format for the council's consideration. We would need to take some time, dig into the details around that. And at that point, I think we could get to some of the questions that Councilmember Burt is addressing, which is, okay. Now that we know these are some of the pitfalls, potential landmines and benefits of undertaking this process. What is the best procedure to do so? Is it to simply go back to the 2018 process, 2017 process, let it fly for two years? And in the meantime, have the ARB, PTC, whichever board or commission that the council wants kind of work that through? Or from the outset, revisit this process, crack open the application process and the standards, let the experts weigh in and undertake the sort of the classic ordinance drafting approach, which is provide general direction, have the staff work it through with the boards and commissions, come back to the council with a more fully formed draft ordinance for consideration.
All right, so let me try to take a crack at a motion. And that would be to refer this to return to the council with a set of alternatives on the the process by which we would be going forward and a a review of the historic context and any alternatives that have been identified by staff at that time.
Can I ask a question? Of Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
So when you say historical historical context, is that the previous ordinance?
It would be that and any other relevant information.
I just want to clarify and thank you.
And I don't hear a second.
I'm waiting to see the writing coming up on the screen.
Have you staff to, yeah. And I guess where it says at that time. Just say any alternatives that staff has identified.
I don't understand the issue, but on the process by which we would be going forward.
Yeah, that's referring to, do we make a decision at night to just accept the repealed ordinance? Do we refer to ARB? Do we refer to PTC? Do we take some other action?
Seems more like choices than process.
There are process choices, alternatives, that alternatives means choices. I'm sorry, it's go ahead and if people have clarifying questions on the motion, then see what we can.
My question is, does historic context refer to the cell towers we have in the city, people's concerns about them, the impact? I would love for that to be a part of this review. So we get a sense of, you know, at the end of the day, how much does this, how big a concern is this?
I guess I should say historic contacts and and resource implications or it's not just resource. It's resource and other implications or alternatives that would be presented by staff.
And can, thank you for that clarification because I think that it wasn't what I thought. So I'm wondering if you might be willing to add in there. So where it says review of the historic context. Prior standards, I just want to get super clear on what has been the case in the past. And so in other words, if we just reverted, quote seamlessly, what that would be.
Yes, that's good. I'd say historic context, including prior standards, but not limited to it.
That'd be terrific. Thank you.
Would you accept including prior standards and community impact?
Yeah, I think that's maybe part of what I was searching for when I said resource impacts. Yep, that's fine. So it'd be not specifically prior standards. And we can put there and community impacts. Boy, now it's really confusing sentences. Where it says any alternatives, say, okay, any other implications that staff has identified, is that better? Okay. Oh, we're saying it twice. Yeah, it's process. That's okay.
Was there a second?
I think he wanted to take out and any alternatives in the final phrase.
Well, no, there's above its process alternatives down here. It is outcome alternatives or I don't know.
Yeah, that was a question we had is whether council was asking staff to also propose other policy choices in this space.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd say propose, yeah, really offer alternatives for us to consider, yeah. So if you review it and you think, gee, we think here's here's something that wasn't considered tonight, we want to know it.
Okay, in terms of substantively what the policy might be. Okay.
So Mayor. Well, you're looking for a second, then can I just offer a couple of things? So so just to reiterate what Kyle had mentioned, when we get the colleagues memo, there's a balance between how much level of effort staff puts into these reports, and so that's what you see reflected in the item that you have for you. I'm hearing very clearly the the direction of additional work that the council may be directing staff to proceed. I will note, because this did come up. You know, this is not currently a priority item or on our work plan today. And so the the contemplation of options that were identified in the colleagues memo and the staff resource section was the repeal of the existing ordinance to go back to the standards that we have before was a pretty straightforward task. We could do that really quickly and come back, and that could be on your consent calendar if you gave us that direction. And we could be done with that. But what you're asking us to do now is a whole level body of work that we are not resourced for in our current work program. And so you can give us this direction, but I would, with my colleagues here at the table, like to have a realistic expectation on when this might come back to the council. I do not see it coming back this year, and I see it being a discussion to fit within one of your priorities for the next year's work plan to do this work. The way it's been described here, that's that's my perspective, and I ask my colleagues to weigh in if they feel differently.
No, we agree. Yep.
I'll just note an alternative would be for us to take the action at the top of page five, or no, the the second half of that paragraph. For a more expedient process, we could bypass PTC and amend the ordinance for it's up to two years or some period of time, is that what you're saying? With additional direction to refer permanent amendment to the PTC. So what we could do is take that action at our upcoming meeting, agendize it that way. And then have work it into the work plan. What is within more aligned with this draft motion?
I prefer what you have on the screen, so I'll second it. Unless you're withdrawing it.
Okay, well, I'm open to either approach. Especially after hearing from staff that this this motion, after what we've heard from staff, would not come back to us promptly. And it would be sometime in next year's work plan.
Part of my dilemma is I have a question that the answer to which alternative I like relates to, and I can't ask it till we move on. So maybe for discussion purposes, unless you're withdrawing it, we can go with the second and we can if we don't like it through discussion, we could move on to your second. Alternative.
Well, based on what staff has said, I'm really torn as to whether we should go with the temporary measure, keep it clean and see how that works while we're reviewing the alternatives. So I'm going to withdraw this motion based on staff's input. And instead, propose that it returns to council with a simple motion to amend the WFC ordinance on a temporary basis up to two years with additional direction to refer a permanent amendment to the PTC. After, well, do we do that additional direction now? Or do we simply wait and and agendize that at a future time?
Honestly, if you were to do that now, and the direction is clear enough tonight, we can do that and put it on consent.
You could, but the second part, which is with additional direction to refer a permanent amendment to the PTC. That's what I was questioning.
So so that has to happen. That's the purpose of the two year period is to give council a chance to send that temporary ordinance through the PTC. And so if you give us the direction tonight to set it up that way, you could also add, if you want it to go to ARB, you could add that. And then we can actually bring that that direction is clear enough that we can draft that and put it on your consent calendar.
Okay, then that's what I will move along with where it says to refer a permanent amendment to PTC and ARB.
Waiting for the text to come up.
Yeah, so it'd be copied that text with only that addition of and ARB.
Let's ask a clarifying question. So I think this is, I have the electronic thing, so it's page three, seven, eight. Amended the ordinance on a temporary basis, e.g. two years with the additional direction to refer a permanent amendment. Amended to what? That's what I.
To return to the par subjective standards.
Question is, what what does, how do we, is that proper language where it says refer a permanent amendment? Shouldn't we say amendment to what?
Yeah, so we should maybe add words like restore the previous ordinance before the objective standards were put into place.
Well, that's, we could restore or change. That's what we, when they, after PTC.
So I'm, I'm looking at the first part of that action. The second part I think is, has a much more wide open discussion about what happens.
Yeah, what Councilmember Vinker was asking about is where it refers, refer a permanent amendment. What's that amendment?
So, so that's, that to me gets to the discussion that you were having before about, you know, talking to the ARB about the specific subjective design criteria that we may want to incorporate.
What if we just put, refer a prospective permanent amendment? So it's not defined, we'd have to, if we return to council, we'd give guidance on intended parameters for that amendment. Is that what?
So additional guidance provided by council on a future permanent amendment to the PTC and ARB.
Thank you, but just to be clear, actually, it was the First Amendment. Because the ordinance on a temporary basis would be going back to the one from 2017. And that's what I wanted to clarify and apparently, and that is what this would do. So for two years, we'd go back eight years.
Yeah. And then I just want to add the clarifying language. John, you, you, I think we had said on the additional direction. Yeah. With, so this language that just got put here would replace just the two words above additional direction. Use staff's assistance in trying to make sure we've crafted this correctly.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah, don't we still need in the second line there, an amendment to revert to 2017 subjective standards to identify that?
Yes, I have a suggestion. When the clerk is ready. Yes, so after WCF ordinance, comma. Consistent with the colleagues memo to the extent allowed by law. Because we will need to make some changes to, to conform the text. And so you will see some changes.
Okay.
Comma, on a temporary basis. John, Kyle, does that work?
So a question on that, which means that in the up to two years period, ARB, PTC can work on it, come back to us with changes to those new, to those old subjective standards and make some new ones. And we could still do that over the next two years.
Yeah, but we, we need to, under this, we need to give them some guidance.
Yeah.
So to clarify, this could come back on consent. You may decide you want to pull it off and discuss it, or do you want to say now that you want it on action? It's, we think it's clear enough, we could put it on consent.
One of the questions is, when would we give any additional guidance to PTC and ARB? Would it be at the time we would adopt the repeal or subsequently?
So this would be the repeal. So if you wanted, you could do it tonight. Or you could do it at the time this comes back, but we would then put it on action for you to provide that guidance.
And, but it could be that additional guidance needn't be at the same meeting that we do the repeal.
Right. I would think that it would happen during, you know, at or around the time of the council's priority setting discussion. We would produce a report talking about all the projects that we were going to be working on. And we would elaborate on, on that. We'd get some guidance then. But we would likely need to come back and schedule a discussion with the council sometime next year to get that guidance to guide the work that we're going to do.
Okay, so we're not presuming that that guidance would occur when it comes back on the repeal. That can happen in short order. This other thing, we could choose to give some guidance in a few whatever weeks. But we could take more time to get that guidance.
Yeah, more likely it would be we'd take a little bit more time.
All right. Thank you. I think this is the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion?
Spoken enough.
All right, Vice Mayor.
I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Vinker, for your patience. I know you have a question.
No worries. And I appreciate the conversation, but I would just like a little more information. Or, and/or to clarify what's been said. So let me see if I can recapitulate something and you tell me if I'm keeping up. So we have these objective standards now. When you're talking about them a little while ago, you're talking about how previously, prior to those, they were the, the, the so-called subjective standards were the same for whatever, for things beyond just the wireless, such as our public commenter had explained. So I think the reason that that's confusing, I mean, I certainly believe you, is that in the colleagues memo, it says, before there were objective only standards, there was a thoughtful list of subjective standards, a list that had been prepared collaboratively by multiple city departments and by the ARB. The city can seamlessly return to these standards now. Now, the objective standards, are they for the wireless towers? That's objective, just yes or no? Yes?
They're, they're for the public right of way.
Yeah, and not, not broadly, I mean, they're specific to them.
The public right of way.
Yes. But the previously existing subjective standards were not. They were more broadly applicable. That's what I think I was hearing, right? Right? Pardon me?
I think Director Layte earlier said that he, he needed to review that. He didn't know what that was. We don't.
Well, he didn't know what they were, but I'm talking generically. What I've been told tonight, I believe, is that the objective standards were for the wireless towers, whatever they were. And that the previous subjective standards, whatever they were, were more broadly applicable. Is that correct? Beyond just the towers.
So again, I, it's hard for me to recall what was in the ordinance many years ago. But there's, there's possibly two prongs to it. One is, you know, all projects are, that go to the architecture review board are subject to architecture review board findings. And those are the same, whether it's a wireless communication facility or a new building. That statement that you read in the memo, you know, is, you know, I believe that there were a set of standards that were in place in the code that we converted to objective standards that would have applied to wireless facilities only.
Yeah, so, so all I'm trying to say is that the reason I had thought that there were subjective standards prepared collaboratively by multiple city departments that were specific to the wireless facilities were because the objective standards had been. And so I just want to make clear to my colleagues that if we go back, we're not going back to a thoughtful list of subjective standards for the wireless, right? It was just subjective.
Ms. Fleming, sorry, you have to wait until somebody wants to call on you to say not a process. Ms. Fleming, sorry, thank you.
So I won't belabor that further, other than to say that what I hope, I think what we all hope for going forward is a set of subjective standards that makes sense for a variety of reasons. Aesthetics, function, cell service, all kinds of great stuff that we're going to go figure out for the 2025 technology. And I just want to point out that if we go, if we follow the current motion, I believe we will live for two years with things that were not only older, and there may be some, you know, modifications, but they're also not specific to this, to, yeah, to the wireless technology. I think that part is true.
Ms. Fleming, please.
So let me ask, so staff, tell me if I'm, I've misunderstood.
All I can do is repeat what I said. There are air, so wireless facilities would be subject to architecture review board findings. They are not subject to those now. There are six ARB findings that will apply, that will, will use for wireless antennas. Those are subjective findings. So we will evaluate those projects. Today, we don't use those findings. Today, we use the objective standards for these right of way. I believe there were also some other standards that were related to wireless facilities that were the source for, you know, helping us bridge to these objective standards. But again, this is part of the research that we'll have to go back and, and do.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand if, if, if the mayor would, would like to ask Ms. Fleming to, to, to answer the question. I'm fine with that. Or, yeah, no, okay. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, I thought previously I was told they were broadly applicable. Now I'm being told they're specific to cell towers. I would just like to know which it is. So Ms. Fleming, I think the mayor is allowing you to come forward, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
As everybody has said, the fundamental difference in subjective standards is that there's ARB review and public hearing and decisions with respect to citing and, and design are made on the basis of particular applications as opposed to any application that might be submitted at any time. And, and in particular, Mr. Layte, I know is well aware of this. It, design is not typically a huge problem because if you have a cluster of cell towers, let's say 12, the design is the same for all of them. So the ARB can deal with that very efficiently. But citing becomes more of an issue. And on the design front, there, and citing too, there were a set of guidelines prepared by the planning, Mr. Layte's planning department, by utilities, by the ARB, by the PTC that established some, again, to repeat myself, guidelines specifically for cell towers. So it might be something that's, that's as simple as, well, you know, we think this is the color paint that would be right for the, for the equipment to be painted. Or it might, might be much broader, for example.
So the guidelines that you're, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I think you're getting a little strained from my question. So the guidelines that were specific for towers to which you are referring, is it your belief that they were, were implemented?
I certainly believe there is every effort to implement them.
No, I want to know if they work. So, because here's why. If we repeal this, we go back to something and I'm trying to figure out what that is. I'm trying to.
I'm, I'm sure Mr. Layte can provide you with that list. I'm sure Peter Balti, if he's, if he's still.
If that's what was implemented, that.
That is what was implemented. Let me give you an example that's the opposite of paint color. There was a standard that said, you know what, people shouldn't look out their front, their living room windows straight at a cell tower. That's an example of a, of a, of one of the guidelines. And it's subjective. In the objective standards, there's something that's akin to that that's, that's defined quantitatively. And really only works for people who own double lots.
What we're trying to figure out is whether those subjective standards were adopted or were only proposed. That's.
They were, they, well, I can't speak to the process, Mr. Layte, undoubtedly can.
That's why I was asking Director Layte.
So if we, if we don't have.
But he doesn't appear to remember the guidelines.
Okay, I think it's time for us to move on. Thank you. I think this will be a part of, just real quick on process. I do, I think these will all be answered when it comes back on consent as a part of the.
Well, that was one of the questions.
But my, the reason I asked it is because if it is, if we, when it comes back in consent, we would have to pull it to find out the answer to know what we would be living with for two years. I'm sorry, and the staff, councilman.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. We, we were asking, what, what would we be requesting staff to come back to us with additional information at the time we adopt the temporary ordinance? It seems we have to have this clarification at that time. So let's just be clear that that's one of the things that we would like. At, when it comes back as an agendized item, to consider the, the temporary ordinance, I'll call it, is a clarification of whether we had previously adopted subjective standards specifically to cell towers or whether we're looking at the general ARB standards.
I'm sorry, thank you. The, the questions have been, yeah. Okay. Is that clear for staff? Okay, great. Are there any other questions by council or discussion?
So do we know whether this is coming back on consent or as an action item? We don't know, I guess.
I, I would add that it comes back as an action item.
The information is going to be in the staff report either way, but that's fine to do it on action. That's what I'd originally thought about.
The public needs to have this conversation. This has not been a very public conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, any other lights? Okay, see no other lights? Councilmember Vinker, were you done?
Believe it or not, I'm done.
Okay. I see no further lights. Let's take the vote.
Vice Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Would that word adjourned?